Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is June 29, 2023. The time is 7 o'clock. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Assistant Cobb.
Eric.
Assistant Hilton-Hanga.
Here.
Assistant LaCuzzi.
Here.
Assistant Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is the pride of the United States of America and to the people of Wichita City, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all. Thank you. We have a special honor this evening to issue the oath of office to a new police officer. I know this is one of Paula's favorite parts of her job.
That it is, but it always takes you crying.
Ready to see you cry.
Thank you.
Aw, happy to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. He's new. This is Blake Bedinga. He started with us. We graduated from the Police Academy in May. I have my little statement to read, and then I'm going to have his family who's here to support him, and his mom is going to come up and pin the badge on. He took his official oath of office his first day, so this is more a ceremonial one. Officer Blake, congratulations on your recent graduation from the Pike's Peak Regional Law Enforcement Academy and on passing the post exam. As you enter into the law enforcement profession, know that you bear responsibility for helping to keep our community safe and to help those in need, that you may be called on to run toward danger, acting as that thin blue line that places you in harm in order to keep our citizens from harm. Know that with service of this nature, there is often an emotional cost on officers and their tenants. For these reasons, law enforcement is an honorable profession, and you have answered a noble call to service and sacrifice. I am encouraged that your family is here to support you. As police families, see firsthand what this job can do to an officer over the years, and they are our strongest allies and support. Take care of them and love them, and do not let the stress of the job steal your joy with them. This badge is a symbol of the ideals of fidelity, strength, and honor. It is a sacred trust given to you not just by me, but by the citizens of Buena Vista. There is a foundation of trust between the citizens of Buena Vista and the BVPD, and as a new officer, you must be a keeper of this trust. This trust is part of a legacy built by former BVPD officers and leaders, as well as the current members of the BVPD. This trust is bound to your duties, as referenced in our mission statement, to ceaselessly pursue criminals, suppress and prevent crime, apprehend offenders, protect lives and property, and maintain order. Our mandate is to do so by being firm, fair, and impartial, to always speak truth, and to act with faith, strength, and honor. With the presentation of this badge, I charge you to keep the faith, that is, to serve our citizens with courage and honor, to hold sacred the trust and authority given to you by the citizens, to be mindful of the legacy built by those who came before you, and to be firm yet fair in the administration of your duties as a police officer for the town of Buena Vista.
What can you not cry at?
All right. I, Blake Bedinga.
I, Blake Bedinga.
Swear by the ever-living God.
Do swear by the ever-living God.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The ordinance of the town of Buena Vista.
And so it's the town of Buena Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
As officer of the police officer.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
The best my ability.
To the best my ability.
I, Jake Morgan, and welcome aboard to our newest officer, Bedinga. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all of the trustees have an agenda for the evening's meeting. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Anyone would like to propose? Is there a motion to accept the agenda, to adopt the agenda as written?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
So, second? So, you?
Yeah, second.
So, we have LaCuzzi and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda. This is for a series of items so that we don't have to discuss each one, but any trustee can choose to pull something out of the consent agenda such that we can discuss it separately. So, is there anyone who would like to make any changes in the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Cobb and LaCuzzi, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we are at the section of our meeting, which is for public comment. As you came in, there was a clipboard that Paula's now carrying. Unless you want to speak. Okay. We have one person who would like to speak, and that is Daniel Niamila. And please, when you approach the podium, once you're there, please give your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to deliver your message to us.
Thank you. My name is Dan Niamila. Address, 6485 Divide Drive in Slata. I'm here on behalf of South Main, the few comments about the water policy change proposal and water advisory board recommendation included in your work package. It seems like water issues have been standing in the way of BV achieving community vision of late, well-planned, intentional, sustainable, vibrant, affordable place to live. The BV vision statement ends with discussion of water. Water is an ingredient to achieving BV's vision, yet the uncertainties regarding water for the town have led to the 120-day moratorium. The water advisory board recommendations, some of them are very good. The water infrastructure and water resources master plan are definitely needed. The reason that there's 120 moratorium is in part due to an absence of planning and uncertainty about water availability. Water is a solvable problem. It's what I do for a living, and your experts certainly are equipped to go and solve or answer the water questions. The water policy change proposal also recommends accepting upper arc water. I know the town has studied this extensively. It's a reliable supply. We support accepting upper arc water, particularly as an immediate and interim step to allow the town to emerge from the 120-day moratorium with an interim solution. The amount of upper arc water that's ultimately accepted by the town as a percentage of overall portfolio or volume, that should be directed by master planning efforts. From my view, there's little risk of accepting too much upper arc water in the near term. There's about 315 SFEs in the pipe. Even if that was all upper arc water based on your current planning, that would be like 11% of your total portfolio. The water policy change proposal should be an interim step, though. The town doesn't have the planning in place to make ultimate water decisions. Those decisions should be based on the ultimate water planning. There's some elements of the water policy change proposal that are problematic, including the 13-year expiration and punitive charge on taps that haven't been immediately developed. Developers aren't in the business of speculating on water. Developers are in the business of building homes and fulfilling elements of the town's vision. So, in the 30 seconds I've got left, to conclude, three points. We really strongly support the town directing staff to complete the water resources master planning efforts. Those are going to be a big lift, but they're important for the town to fulfill its ultimate visions. Second, adopt an interim water policy so that the town can emerge from the 120-day moratorium with a solution, and then develop ultimate water policy based upon the town's water master plan. Water is a solvable problem for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the only public comment that we have. We will move on. Now, we go to our staff reports. Lots of staff reports are in the trustee packet, and then we have certain people present at alternate meetings. So, the town treasurer is the first of the staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening on a Thursday night. It's hard to follow Blake's ceremony there with the treasurer report, but so be it. So, just a couple of highlights here for the month, month of June, kind of looking back at activities primarily in May into June. Proud to kind of reiterate the news that Shane Bassford shared with all of you, all the GOCO, the town did receive the GOCO grant for the Billy Cordova Memorial Park, which is outstanding after a number of years of efforts on that. So, kudos to the Recreation Department for putting together a successful application. That's roughly $750,000 coming into our community through GOCO, so we appreciate GOCO's support as well. But they keep rolling. So, Gates Family Foundation was another grant received for that project for, in the amount of $20,000, and we have several more grant applications that will be going forward specific to that project. So, they are well on their way to getting the funding model ready for that exciting project. Going down, I just want to, as usual, highlight a couple of things related to sales tax. For the month of April, we're always two months behind looking at sales tax from when it's, when we receive it and are able to report on it. So, for the month of April, we had, similar to March, where we were, I would call it a little more flat growth compared to what we've seen in recent years, but still roughly 2% over budget and just under 3% over 2022. So, that still looks healthy. And, let's see, I think I'll be highlighting some other things on the rec report later. Pause there. Other things in the report, as usual, kind of a summary of payables during the period, including checks over $2,000. So, I'll take any questions if you have them.
Mr. Swisher.
You'll be hearing a lot from me tonight.
I know. Sounds like lots of cracks at me tonight. I see that Danielle has come to the meeting. I misled you, I think, in terms of what time to be here for public comment.
I was working up until about five minutes ago.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
If you all don't mind, I'd like to just break with protocol and allow her to speak for public comment. Three minutes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Probably kids to bed. Thank you. My name is Danielle Shelton. I live at 23 James Street here in Buena Vista. I am simply here to request more serious input by the community and by town on this proposed Sangre de Cristo tree management along the electrical lines. I have a background of a Masters of Science in Resource and Environmental Geography that focused on human and resource interaction. So, I have an experience prior to my current vocation in where stakeholder groups can input on these kinds of resource management decisions. I think we're in a position to be able to, as a community, as co-op members, where the easements overlap, but the plan has not been very firmly made yet. And so I think we can have a lot more input. It can come from a really data-driven place, and I just really appeal to that nature and decision-making to really come from a place where we're taking into account situation as it stands, the impacts that the proposal makes. So, if you're unfamiliar, I actually spoke with Tom Linza directly at Sangre de Cristo just a few weeks ago, and the discussion was that the plan has not been fully made, but that, you know, within 15 feet on either side of major power lines and poles, as the proposal for being selective about tree trimming and also tree clearing, and that that's not been figured out, what that actually means yet. And so, that's, I think, a wonderful opportunity for engaged engagement around the data. Important data points that are being cited are precedence. Communities like in California that unfortunately experienced wildfire hazard to the extent of decimating the community, I certainly think that's incredibly important for us to take into consideration wildfire hazard. But to do it from a data-driven science perspective is what I'm appealing to this board and community to do. So, precedence being that, that a California community had much different set of power lines. They're different height, different nature. Those communities had different types of vegetation. They had different things to consider. How it can be taken into consideration, the more rural areas around us have different needs than maybe what's happening in town, right? Communities as big as San Diego, there's precedents where they went tree by tree in some instances because of the nature of how the community can shift around tree protection and tree existence, tree equality. Someone watching my time?
Yeah, I'm watching the time.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I know this will come, that we'll be able to be involved in the decision.
Exactly. That's my request.
I appreciate the impact that the group might have.
Yeah. There's climate scientists, neuroscientists, a bunch of people engaged already, community members. So, I might have public contact if other people would like to engage. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you for what you do.
Next, we have the staff to start from. Public Works Director, Sean Williams.
Nice segue there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fantastic. I appreciate the community so much and perspective. It's so important. We'll talk a little bit about that, too. A few things, kind of maybe kind of up to speed a little bit. So, yeah, typical water correction report. Our reports. Yeah, we're chasing a little bit of water still, so we prepared a few lakes. So, kind of interesting to see what maybe the report for June looks like once we get through this. But, you know, we did pick several lakes in April and May, and the unaccounted seems to be kind of at that range where maybe we're still chasing more unaccounted. So, right now, we're currently doing some lake detection, both Ivy Lake and in town. So, Ivy Lake, of course, is related to what we're looking for with the unaccounted that we have on this report. Updates on the water plant expansion projects. And I know that we have a big night, so I'll get through some of these, but if you have any questions or if you want to stop and pause, I'm happy to do that. Think probably the next meeting that I have, maybe the second meeting in July, I'll bring in probably Hal Smith, and we'll kind of do a top sheet report and get everybody kind of up to speed on how things are going with the water expansion project. Got a big picture in here, kind of showing the, you know, the excavation is happening right now, but be good to kind of catch up and talk to the engineering representative for the town on this project and spend a little bit of time talking about that. More than likely, we'll be, when we bring in up the El Run application as well, too. We had a second draft application come in for the second application request coming in, so that's under review right now. So, we have several engineers helping us with that, along with the water advisory board, and we should have one kind of a hydraulic component coming back for review, and like to just kind of have that full kind of analysis that staff can provide for that. I know that everybody on both sides is working really hard, like I said before. Appreciate all the hard work from the town, from the board, and from the development team. The few developments in there, a few sidewalk replacements going on, tree trimming, road grading. We had the RFP bid closed today for the tank painting project for the upper tank, and thank goodness we provided enough money to do that. We'll go through the, we had eight, it's some mills, and so we'll go through those, and at the next board meeting, we'll request a bit of work. So, the next week. Anyway, so that's, that's great. One of the things that I think that kind of maybe I can spend a little bit more talking, time talking about is what Danielle just kind of discussed and kind of get everybody kind of up to speed on what we have seen, you know, as the town staff and the tree board. So, Sangre de Cristo did reach out to the tree board back in May and kind of let us, kind of precursor to what is likely to happen and what is happening. And so, in my report, I kind of felt like right now, it's just good to kind of message what Sangre de Cristo has right now, and there's still, you know, there's still a lot unknown, and you still have a lot of heavy lifting to do. And I would imagine that this process is going to be thoughtful and consider some of the things that Danielle mentioned, you know, data-driven thoughtfulness, evaluation of individual trees. At this point, the tree board has done a fantastic job, and it provided a lot of good comments and a lot of good feedback. And I just want to make sure that when we, as we're kind of getting through that, that we're appropriate, you know, with how we're doing this, and I'm happy to kind of provide some of the comments that, and some of the thoughtfulness that we've received from our tree board and staff and things like that. But also, I kind of feel like this hasn't quite shaped up to see what it is that we want to do or what we need to do. Staff has reached out already to find local fire mitigation certification certified, you know, arborist to kind of help with this process so that we can actually kind of work as a support, you know, and make sure that we have the, you know, community and the town kind of involved pretty intimately, you know, pretty, so it could have a pretty significant impact. I don't know what those impacts are yet, and I think they're realizing, you know, right now, you know, what, how they're planning it, where they're going to be applying their efforts, and, you know, what areas are more sensitive. We have a lot of sensitive areas. We have a lot of historic trees. So, anyways, we're working on that, and that's kind of about all I really have, like, kind of close with that, you know. I did, I will say that it's always kind of fantastic to see the rodeo on high noon. I can't believe how many people show up for that event. It's fantastic. So, it's really good to see that's kind of a connection with historic Buena Vista. So, it's always fun. Thanks.
So, Sean, do you think that you could find time in your very overworked schedule to take the trustees on a tour of the water facility sometime? Because I know most of them haven't been, they haven't seen the water system at all.
Yeah. Let's, let's talk about that. Let's get a date set up, because it will take some efforts on the contractor's part to, to kind of make sure that it's a safe walk through, because we do have some excavation happening outside, but absolutely, I think that'd be great.
Who hasn't been? I think Cindy and I have been. Have you, Devin?
Yeah.
Gina's been.
You've been. Okay. All right. Tell us something about that.
Yeah. Essentially, we need trustee. Yeah.
Jess, that'd be great. You, yeah, I mean, if you have any ideas, if you would like to maybe schedule it, like, maybe before a board meeting or something like that. That's what we've kind of done in the past. We never have enough time, but I would say maybe 5:30, quarter to 6:00, we might be able to get back here by 7:00.
Is that of interest?
Oh, yeah.
It is for me, but I also recognize how, you know, maxed out so far, so.
We'd love to bring you out there.
Just don't get Joe talking too much. Give him, give him a little bit, and then, hey, Joe Pedro, your water operator.
That's impossible.
Gets excited about it.
He does. He does.
And everyone doesn't have to go, you know. If you've been and you don't want to go, let me know.
I bet we can come up with some plans around that.
We, we have a bus now. Maybe we could.
Oh, yeah, our activity bus.
So, but yeah. Give me maybe a week notice so that we can let Bryce Lake know that I might be coming, you know, and so they could, you know, give any kind of PPE awareness out there or, you know, safety, city control measures for anything that you want to walk into or touch. But for the most part, it's, it seems like a very doable thing. It looks a lot different now.
Whenever we have more than two trustees together, we have to announce it as a public meeting, which means the public can come, too.
Need a lot more PPE.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Does anyone have questions for Sean?
Some specific ones.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we have Shane Bassford, the Recreation Supervisor. Are you Shane tonight?
I am Shane tonight. Well, I can't be Shane, but I will, I will take, field any questions you have. Shane had to sub in for helping some softball games.
See the report that they're so shorted.
Yes. Seasonal staff is challenging, but they still recruit a lot of, a lot of good people from within the community. So, every once in a while, they got to jump in and handle programming. So, they're, you know, pretty expensive work for rec. I'm not going to go through all the details. I, again, highlight the success of the team in terms of going after grants. They're great at pushing forward capital projects and doing even better, working with Parks and Sean's team on a lot of those things. And I think you'll see also the extensive number of special events. I think Leslie does a good job summarizing those towards the end of the report. But yeah, they're in full swing with all the programming and moving ahead with the capital projects. And I also just want to acknowledge, I think we spoke about it a little bit at the last meeting, but the legacy stage at McFellamy Park, what a successful start. It's been with that new feature, and of course, Recreation Department and Public Works Department take the lead from town on that. So, kudos to that team.
Yeah, it's a beautiful project. You're having a concert right now.
Yes, they are.
From Bill. Yeah, well, he did put together a nice report. Things are going gangbusters.
Trail runner here. I just want to special shout out for the whole trail rehabilitation and everything that you're doing there's been excellent. Just following along with that personally. I don't know. I wish she was here to tell him thank you for keeping up with that. Those trails are so busy all the time. It's a major place that people utilize when they come here, right? You know, and so to see things shape up there and taken care of has been great. So, but yes, please.
Thanks, Gina. Any other comments from the rec department?
I have a question.
Yes.
How come the farmers market has moved to railroads instead of McFellamy?
That's their choice.
That's their choice.
They felt like they weren't getting enough traffic at McFellamy Park. We, we really liked them in McFellamy Park because it's a comfortable space. There's plenty of room. But ultimately, their, their decision. But ultimately their, their decision to move it and we worked with them to find a different spot to try it out.
Cool.
Okay, ready to move on? We'll do our first business item, which is the appointment of a new trustee to take the place of Mark Jenkins. And during our work session, we heard presentations from five very good candidates. And we went through a voting process and two candidates came out within one vote of each other, seventeen votes for one, eighteen for the other. Andrew Rice was the one who got eighteen votes. Michael Hannigan got seventeen votes and we now will go ahead and appoint the trustee. So I would accept a motion from, from a trustee to appoint someone as trustee. Please name that person.
I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew Rice as trustee.
Second.
Great. Okay, so we have Row and Swisher. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, congratulations, Andrew. Michael, thank you very much. We look forward to it. April.
Andrew, you get to take the oath of office and you get to sit down. So.
Yeah, sit down means up here.
So I hope you had your coffee.
This is a very underwhelming oath of office, what we just saw.
I still get a little sentimental though. Please officer. Okay. Hi, Andrew Rice.
Hi, Andrew Rice.
Yes, and I'm supporting the Constitution of the United States.
You're from the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances of the town of Yonkers.
The ordinances of the town of Yonkers.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of trustee.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of trustee.
Upon which I'm about to be inner.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
The best of my oath.
The best of my oath.
Thanks, Paula. Your name is already all printed up here. Paula's so efficient for everyone. Very good. Thank you. Good. The next item on our agenda is the 2022 audit report. We have the auditor right here with us. So I'll turn this over to Philip to test you.
Why do I have to follow the exciting?
What you're saying, this isn't exciting?
Confess, John.
Usually everybody gets them walks out of it.
No, it really is. I appreciate one of the comments during the work session because the audit is a very important part of our overall process for not only the finance department, but for town as a whole. It's, it's, you know, a demonstration. While first it's a requirement, we can't ignore it. We need to complete this step and submit our results to the state every year. But it's, but it's beyond that. It's a really important step to have, to engage with a a third party to come in and work with our teams and take a look at our processes and our financial statements. It allows us to dig in and really have good discussion about how we operate internally on all sorts of things from payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, grant management and reporting. So, you know, is a huge learning opportunity for, for our finance team. So we, we do have our auditor tonight, Jim Hinkle, representing Hinkle Company. And, and this is our second year working with them. And I think first year is always that learning opportunity where they're learning our systems and we're kind of learning with how they operate as well. This year they get, they, they had a chance to meet me and how awkward I can be at this, at this role. But I, I do want to recognize Wade Fisher and Cindy Myers, who we worked specifically with from, from Jim's team. They spent a week here in our offices and digging through all sorts of stuff and kind of keeping us running around pulling, pulling reports and and things like that. So I wanted to recognize Wade and Cindy for their hard work. The packet contains the draft audit report. So essentially the audit has been constructed, put together. That's a combination of the auditor's comments and their observations, as well as our management analysis of our financial statements. So Jim will present and kind of share with you their perspectives and findings. And then if you have any questions about the report itself or what the auditor's role was, please feel free to ask that. I do want to kind of reiterate the step we are at here in our process, which is right here, the end of June. So this is a step that's required for the audit to be presented to the board of trustees. You all have the opportunity to ask questions, dig into it, but ultimately we're asking for your emotion to, to accept the report, which we will then spend the month of July finalizing the document and getting it ready to submit to the state, which I do before the end of July. So tonight doesn't end the process, but it's, it's getting closer. Thank goodness. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jim.
Thank you very much. And my name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle and Company CPAs. And we did perform the annual audit of the financial statements. Before I get into the details of that, kind of a offshoot of what Philip said and an introduction to our new trustee. The audit firm is actually works for the board, but with management. So we don't work for the management. We are independent of management. We work for the board or hired, fired by the board so that we have that ability to talk to you directly about things that may be good, maybe not so good without necessarily feeling like we'll get fired by management. So there is a distinction there that we do work for the board, even though we work with management in the production of this financial statement. We start off our audit with our analysis of the town's internal accounting controls. That is the processes and procedures that the finance department employs in collecting cash receipts, dispersing funds out as expenditures, either in regular expenditures or payroll. And one of the primary things that we're looking for in that is a segregation of duties so that one person isn't doing everything. An accounting transaction takes primarily three steps. The initiation of the transaction, the approval, and then the recording of the books and records. And so we want to see at least two people involved in, in those steps so that one person isn't able to do everything on their own and no one else knows what's going on. We're also looking at the, what we call control features. And that is, for example, the approval of an invoice prior to being paid, things of that nature. And then to test those internal controls, we select a random sample of disbursements from throughout the year for both cash disbursements and payroll. And we look at the underlying documents for those transactions and we're looking for those control features, those approvals. The documentation of the account coding within the general ledger, things like that, the supporting documentation. Was it provided? Was it there and used for the disbursement? Was the payroll transaction from approved documents and things of that nature? We do that for two reasons. First reason is to determine whether or not we have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls. And those are terms of art of ours. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw within the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that could result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. In other words, is our system designed such that it would allow an error to go like undetected and create a material misstatement to the annual financial statements? So the answer to that is we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal control structure or any of our testing of internal controls. That's the answer that you want to hear. The other reason we do that is that allows us to design our tests for the actual financial statements. And we use primarily what we call substantive testing, which is tested details in analytic review. And the tested details is just exactly what it sounds like. We drill down into an account balance and we look at all the underlying transactions and we compare a lot of those to supporting documentation to determine that the account coding and the transaction is treated correctly for the financial statements. The analytic review process is where we look at this year, last year, this year, a budget, balance sheet items like receivables to revenues, payables to disbursements. And we're looking for relationships that we either don't expect or we can't explain. And if we find any of those, we do more test of transactions to, to ensure that the financial statements are presented correctly. The end result of that is our audit opinion. Like frankly, the financial statements are the representations of management in a town and our piece is the opinion on those financial statements. And our opinion is that the financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and applied on a basis consistent with the prior year. That's also what you want to hear. In, in technical terms, it's called an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, it's called a clean opinion. So that's a good result. That's what you need to have. Once you approve this draft or accept the draft, it's ready to go. We'll just remove the draft statement and put it in a final form on the opinion on our letterhead. And we will also issue a required communication letter at that time. And that is we are required to communicate in writing whether or not certain events occur during the course of the audit. And basically we have nothing that we are going to be communicating. We did not have any difficulties during the audit process. We did not have any disagreements with management. We were not aware of management getting communications from other auditors. That's kind of an odd one, but it goes back about fifteen years ago when you would have opinion shopping. And that is if we disagree with an accounting procedure of the town and we're going to give a qualified opinion, then they would just go talk to other accountants until they found one that would agree with them. And so now we're required to communicate if we're aware of that and we're not. We did not have any misstatements of the financial statements or of the underlying records in the form of auditing adjustments, nor did we have what we call past adjustments, which are errors to the books and records that aren't significant. And we don't make those in the books and records. So we're required to communicate that. So all in all, it was, it was a good, clean audit. We did learn a lot. I think Philip learned a lot about the closing process and the preparation of the financial statements and all the things that go into it. But it was a good audit or timely. The only filing requirement you will have is that the audit, final audit is submitted to the state auditor's office by July thirty first. And that will have, we'd no problem at all having that accomplished well before then. So a good audit. We did not find any problems that we need to communicate. And I think you all can feel good that we finished this process on a good note. Last year we had some cleanup items from the previous audit firm on getting things in accordance to certain accounting principles. This year we did not have any of those items on. So let's move. Any questions? I've covered a lot of ground.
When you say last year, that would be 2021. Was that dealing with the capital lease of, of the building?
That's correct. We had to capitalize that lease and restate the beginning, fund balances for the prior year's effect of that.
And in doing, in doing so, you were looking at the certificates of participation?
Yes.
And, and those don't cause us any problems. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. Anybody have questions about the audit or financial statements? No questions, but just congratulations. It's like you're quite a lot of transition and your team and just to come through with a clean audit.
Thank you.
It's really great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is okay, is there a motion to approve the audit as drafted? I still move. Okay, we got Cobb and the Cretzy. Row and row. Do we need a roll call on this?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Now, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the police station under budget. Good job. Bear of good news.
Thank you, thinking American trustees. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief and I'll run through this. Also a brief staff report, but I anticipate a great discussion on some of the staff recommendations. So the police station capital project, as you all know, is at its final days, hopefully. This is a total project of $5.8 million, including property acquisition. And on page one fifty-seven of your packet, it just kind of gives you a very high level summary of how the three main buckets within that $5.8 million were spent and what our expected actuals are versus those budgets and what our expected savings are versus those budgets. And so I'm happy to answer more details, especially about the hard costs. But I'm not going to go into that in too much detail. I am excited to be able to present the almost quarter million dollars of anticipated savings versus that original budget. While the project has languished a little bit, maybe is a strong term, it's been delayed. We are, we are under budget and that is an important component of that, that project. So the final pieces of the air handling unit should be delivered tomorrow. We very much hope that we're able to achieve certificate of occupancy on or around July thirteenth, allowing the PD team to actually move in by the end of July. So that's really our, our current trajectory and our hope. There's still one outstanding piece of equipment, air conditioning condenser that will not be installed until August. Not throw off our certificate, certificate of occupancy. That is actually part of the basis for the first stack recommendation. So part of the way that we wanted to construct this was first update on the project, very large capital project for the town. Very important that we are under budget and then also offer a few thoughts from staff on how those, those saved dollars might be redeployed. And the thinking here was really saying, if, if we were going to spend those dollars in a capital form, investing one time to realize a, a project to fruition or move a project forward in the form of a police station, how could we also put forward recommendations to you all about how those dollars could go into other projects that are themselves either in process or could be finalized or sort of moved to the next stage in a very real way within 2023, right? We weren't, there's obviously a million different things this money could be spent on, or it could just go back into general fund. But the spirit of the first dollars was invest in capital projects. And so that's, that was the spirit of these recommendations. The, the first recommendation is actually leaving about $25,000 in the police station capital project. One of the reasons being that air, air conditioning condensing unit that needs to be installed still. But also these other small things that we all know will probably crop up as a, a large building comes into, into use. The second recommendation was taking a small amount of that money, investing it in additional consultant capacity for well number three construction and one for well number three construction and well number four design. Um, after consulting with, with public works, it felt, felt like that was a solid recommendation. It could actually move the needle in a faster way on those projects. So defer any questions on that to Sean. Um, the third recommendation was, uh, deploying some of this capital into a contribution or towards the capital project of this collaboration with the BB schools on establishing, uh, North Evans Street and their public parking lot. Um, up kind of behind Newbies, right? And which would also function as an alternative and better laid out bus route for every Parsons Elementary School. And hopefully set the stage for more flexibility of possible future expansions for them on their campus. Um, they have contributed and already paid for this initial design work that you saw in your packet. Um, and so if you were all to, to, um, give a head nod towards allocating these dollars towards a project, we would need to sit down with a shepherd pencil and really develop a, a plan for exactly how those dollars will be deployed and what that would achieve. Um, so I don't want to represent that as a, oh, it's just ready to go tomorrow. Um, but it, it does represent a project that could be moved forward significantly this year. Uh, the fourth recommendation is to kind of take the next step, so to speak, on exploring what a board chambers and municipal court expansion, uh, capital project could look like. Um, this next step would be called schematic design. You all saw an initial conceptual design in your packet, which is the result of some of our early conversations, probably a year or so ago. Um, the, the, the intent with a schematic design scope of work would be to take those conceptual designs. Do some more detailed future proofing for this block. You know, going back to that 2021 master concept of this block, working with Boys and Girls Club, thinking about the assets that town has in this land, along with the needs, both, um, for municipal court and board chambers, but also for town hall, um, and making sure that that concept that's shown is sort of validated against what we think our future needs will be. Once we've done that step, they would be entering into a 20% design exercise for that actual board chambers and municipal court building or expansion. Um, the deliverables of that scope of work would really be, uh, a 20% design set, which we, we would be able to put more fine tuned numbers and construction, uh, budget to. Um, so this is definitely not a full design. We would anticipate that full design costing, um, you know, a good 10% of that eventual project cost, which would be more than this 50,000, but this would get us teed up in a way that we have far more information about how and whether to pursue that project. Um, and then finally, uh, a recommendation to put forward money or, or society additional money for both Billy Cordova Memorial Park and other rec priorities. Yeah. Um, so I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Joseph. Just real quick, Board it. Earl has joined us as well. Um, specific to the, uh, number five there, the, the rec, um, projects that are already budgeted in another way. Uh, it was also identified in discussions with them that the pocket wave that the community has put forward a tremendous amount of money towards, uh, plus town match, uh, is, is still moving forward. Um, there's, there's no, uh, known delay there. However, working in the river, uh, constructing in the river comes with quite a bit of risk. And, um, and, and so I think Earl has a really good perspective on what has taken place in Salida. It just kind of anticipating that, that while we have a, a budget number that we're going towards, there might be some benefit to, uh, allocating, uh, roughly $20,000 more just for contingency uh, towards that, but he is available here to answer any questions, uh, on that. And then that, these are, these are not, I also want to emphasize, these are not seeking approval for budget adjustments at this point. This is just kind of gauging where the board is interested in staff proceeding or not proceeding in any of these areas to, uh, essentially come back with, uh, an actual project proposal and/or budget adjustment. So you, you're not modifying the budget. These dollars are already in the budget under the police station, right? So we're just talking about potentially moving them and ultimately giving staff direction on where to start looking next.
Okay. And, and I know you guys have probably thought of this and, but I'll ask you just obviously to per publicly, but, um, any thoughts just on, um, spending it somehow to, uh, take the edge off maybe some of our affordability issues with housing and carbonate? And so, uh, just curious if that was thought about and if so, anything you can share about that or maybe why it wouldn't make the list or your thoughts behind it?
Absolutely. A very good question. And, and I do, I want to recognize, I appreciate you bringing that up, uh, ahead too for us to consider. Um, I think it's something that the board could absolutely add to this list or, or, uh, in, in, include as a direction to pursue as well. Um, I think in my mind that we have earmarked kind of the ARPA fund, remaining ARPA funds, which is roughly 400,000 are, are really sitting there waiting and, and probably likely going towards the carbonate street housing project. The other aspect that, and just kind of understanding the financial model from Joseph, um, it didn't feel like this amount of money was going to move that needle on affordability all that much. But Joseph, I don't know if you have further actual data behind that or information about that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you all are very familiar with all the variables in that project, right? And so I do believe that if, if a quarter million dollars of additional cash were devoted to the housing aspect of that project, we may be able to expect a, a percentage of point one or two percentage point difference in the AMI, right? So we're, so when we look at a quarter million dollars of the total capital stack, we, we wouldn't see a 5% shift, a 10% shift in, in affordability. Um, what if that dollar amount could make a bigger difference in that project for, or when we, when we look at crossing the finish line, these restrictions and we really hammer down, are they in perpetuity? Are they 30 year? Um, what are the terms and details of those restrictions? And do those terms and details put additional pressure on the project that make it all that much harder to finance or fund, right? Those are, those are areas where maybe a quarter million dollars would make a difference. I don't know the answer to that, but I do think we will know that answer very soon. Um, we, we, we are nearing the finish line on bringing back some more details on, with you on that. So my mind would go less to having this make a difference on AMIs, but potentially having some sort of impact on the project viability as a whole. Um, just a few thoughts.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Oh, go ahead. Peter, are we going to ask something?
Yeah, I was going to ask. Um, thanks for letting us. Uh, I appreciate that, that mine says this is capital projects than we're thinking of. How much combined minus like police? So then I went down like, is there any way that these funds could help achieve with recruiting or, um, because that's been brought up multiple times in our meetings is how hard it is to recruit new people for the police department. And just, you know, as we touched several times, we're going to be growing by 23% and they're having a hard time recruiting. Would these be able, would these funds be able to help at all? The answer could be no. I have no idea. I just didn't know if that was something that could be looked at by the chief or not.
I appreciate that. I know that, uh, any of our departments would appreciate that perspective because it's a challenge across the whole organization. I, I would just, you know, a few thoughts, uh, related to that. These are one-time funds, right? So it, it wouldn't necessarily allow us to create something that would be reoccurring, such as salary changes or things like that.
Like a sudden bonus or something like that.
Right. Um, I, I would say thank you to the town for supporting a project like this. The police department now has an amazing facility, which I think is a recruiting mechanism in itself.
Hmm.
Um, properly equipped, properly paid, good facility. That, that's pretty good. Um, we can absolutely have further discussions with the police department on that idea of like, hey, take, take a moment to think about, are there one-time funding, kind of one-time funding help in any other way? Um, as well, so I don't want to say no to that. I like the thought, but the one-time funding part is, is a big challenge.
I was going with that, I had a little read it. So, good.
Earl, did you want to talk about the, the river?
Yeah, I can give this just a high level update on the river and Cordova Park.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, so, uh, for the whitewater park project we've been working on redoing our pocket wave for about three years. It's $211,000 total project. Um, the community has chipped in, um, worth of $100,000 in cash. So been a great community funded project, but, um, you know, we just want to get to the finish line. Um, we, having that Phil presented it really well, it's having some extra funds to make sure we do it the right way and finish strong and actually get it completed. We've been working with the public for so long and keep delaying it and delaying it. So we'd like to get that finished. Um, it will help spread out the crowds at the staircase way, making a safer environment down there. Just helping to alleviate the recreation pressures that we're seeing on a daily basis. Um, so I'd be a really nice addition. Um, Billy Cordova is, you know, obviously a, a giant project that we're just starting. It's a $1.3 billion total scope for the Billy Cordova Memorial Park and Trail. Um, as we all know, we receive 750,000 from Bit Outdoors Colorado, which is a huge chunk. Town has contributed a lot of funds over the years. Um, the county has chipped in. Um, but in our budget, we still are about 100 to 150,000 short term, depending on how much we want to put in copper for contingencies, um, to get to the finish line. Um, we think the Billy Cordova Memorial Park and Trail is a great project for these funds, um, to go towards it's our big, big project that's going to service people of all abilities and all backgrounds and all, all sorts of physical and developmental needs. But also it has that first responder theme. And so we see a good fit between using some additional funds from the, the PD project to go towards first responder themed recreational facilities, so.
So has that project gone out, um, for bid yet? How, how do you know what the cost is going to be?
Uh, based off, it has not gone out for bid yet. Um, but we worked with, um, our team, our, we worked with Larry and out of Salida when we were putting together all of our proposals and they helped us build really accurate price, um, concepts for the project. And it could change. It could come under, it could come at or it could come above. Once we put it off, also we'll find out. I'm planning to do that later this summer.
And with the river, is the main object to have more recreation for people or greater safety or both or?
Both, um, just the really large increase in all types of recreation on the river. Whether it's fishing or hiking or people just relaxing, swimming, boating, kayaking, surfing. Um, everyone's congregating in one area. It's our most popular wave. If we had another one that was, you know, close to that performance or better, it could spread out the crowds and just make it a, a more enjoyable but safer experience for people. So everyone's just not landing on top of each other and piling on top of each other all day. It's not like water world down here right now. Pretty exciting.
I like watching it while I'm nice and dry on it. Does anyone have suggestions they want to make on this and how we approach this or?
Why, I would just be curious, like if you do find out closer to, you know, if that would push us to a point where we could get these restrictions in perpetuity, I would, I would love to consider that because that was a huge focus. I mean, all those things are great. Don't get me wrong. I think any way we spend it will be advantageous and helpful for all those things. But I'd be curious to see if that would move the needle enough and it may not. And if it doesn't, totally, yeah. But, um, if the timing works out to find out, I'd be curious. But that's, you know, but I'm also very much on board with the things that staff has suggested. We put a lot of time and energy into that. I think it's great. So it's just, you know, figure, just check in, see if it helps, but.
Looks like what we're saying with regard to town hall east is that the main thing that we're building is a sort of a chamber for us to have meetings. In a, you know, a conference room, but, uh, I don't, I don't know how much money we're talking about spending. It seems like, I don't know, just not sure I'm comfortable with it. I, I don't know if this is a $5 million project or what it is, but not that uncomfortable with being right here.
Yeah, just a, a scale, you know, a scale of magnitude. The project as it's conceptualized there is probably more in the 2.5 to 3.5 million dollar range. Um, and the only other use I do want to make sure that that's a top of mind is not just council chambers, but also municipal court. I know they've been also struggling with this sort of setup tear down, uh, in their context. So not to unduly advocate for it, but just to make sure that's the top of mind as well.
And I guess I'd add to that too, that, um, we were preparing for our goals meetings. One of my tasks was to kind of connect with Judge Green. And it was clear that he and prosecutor, their, their whole staff would like something a little more professional. Court-like, I guess. And, uh, so that's, I was going to ask, it would be the same, the board would use it and the court would use it?
It would be the intent of the, the design to that.
Okay.
Purpose, right? So that we're not just building a single use facility, but that it is as multi-use as possible. But then it is far more set up for both those functions.
Just my thought.
Can't use the courthouse somewhere right here. Yeah, I like the ideas that we have on there.
I, I do too. I like the idea of kind of checking into what kind of debt it might make in affordability, but also failing matter. That does, it doesn't seem that significant. I think it's a good mix of projects that will have a high impact on a number of things, so. Good work.
Uh, that is analysis that I'd be able to do in the next couple of weeks. We do anticipate having discussions on, uh, the final key terms of deed restrictions at our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I would, I would work to try to understand with the fading west team and our attorneys about what are some of those sticking points in the details of the deed restrictions? And does quarter million dollars make a difference or not? And then be able to present you with that, you know, matrix of information.
Yeah, a big thing that I, I was going to bring up during trustee staff, but just seemed kind of relevant is that I did attend a session at the conference where, um, the town of Eagle, uh, habit habitat, uh, was working with fading west on their, uh, affordable homeownership, uh, program over there. And they worked with them to get Mitsubishi cold climate heat pumps instead of those radiant bars. And that's a way to help with affordability.
Um, that is the current trajectory for this project.
Oh, good.
I don't know. And I, I won't commit to the brand Mitsubishi, but high efficiency, you call their heat pumps is definitely the, the current design standard that they're.
Oh, good. Yeah. Well, if it's something that's more efficient or, or something that can help with heat, that'd be huge to help with affordability.
Fading West was mentioned over and over and over at the Colorado Municipal League Conference. So I've probably heard their name 20 times, I think. So it's good.
So I think the gist I'm pulling out of this is that we'll proceed exploring these in a little more detail, while at the same time integrating it into the, what's upcoming with carbonate streets for the heat restrictions and, and kind of more of the final details on that to evaluate if some or all of these funds can make a difference there. Then maybe sometime July, we can get further direction from the board. How this shakes out so that we have enough time left in the year to put some of these dollars to use.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, so the amount that we could spend is the basically $238,000.
I, I would, I would say yes, with the exception, I, I would, I would want to keep that contingency there because.
We need to finish since the money was for the police department.
So, so minus that trustee switcher, then yes, that is.
So the money remaining. So the money remaining, unless it really makes a big difference in the carbonate AMI of what affordability. If it's only gonna make a really small difference to other projects is helping more areas of town. That's all I was going to say. And if we can make a difference, I agree with you that making carbonate affordable as possible is it. But if it's not enough money to make a substantial difference, we could help more areas of the town.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay. So we don't need to give you any further direction.
Unless you, unless you would like to, we'll take, we'll take whatever, yeah.
I mean, you don't need that in the form of a motion.
No.
Okay, all right, great. Let's move on then. I think your understanding of what we want is good. So we will now go to the water ordinance presentation. Do you want to make this Mr. Joel Benson?
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. We're visiting this evening this proposal to try and wrap up some of the policy change discussions that we've been having. Not to say that they're gonna be done because it's an ever moving target, but at least to get to some completion. Hopefully then maybe we can look at more toward sooner. This builds on, you guys know in October twenty twenty one, we adopted that Water Resource Master Plan. Followed by January, the Water Rights Study that helped inform well, number three, well, before the gallery. And then our water rights portfolio and different pursuits that we could take. We developed some water strategy based on that and have been working on, maybe, maybe last October, November, we first presented some ideas for that policy, including the water allocation. The different categories and those categories were expanded to help, you know, help with the community a little bit more on some of the needs. And there's been some different ideas put forth here and there and trying to come up with a balance. I'm allowed to say, hey, trustees, we have all the water in the world and we do not need to worry about balance. In terms of water, but of course, that's not the situation. And so we have of different ideas that we've distilled from the community, from legal expertise, from trustees, from you know, different public. And so tonight I'd like to present. Is this, you can hear?
Yeah, you can just hit up that guy.
The head of animated was like, oh, you did. Anyhow, so this evening is a presentation. First, there's some opportunity for discussion and questions following this. You know, if there's any direction to change what is kind of conceptualized. You did receive the draft ordinance that'll go later after the packet went out, but that's available as well. If there was something like, no, we, I want to see this, I'd like some clear direction so we can make sure we make those changes, those changes. Tonight, we're just focusing on the ordinance itself. We will have a work session, January, excuse me, July eleventh with our water attorney and hopefully a water engineer. As a reminder to see how, how it all fits again with the overall strategy and kind of reminder where we're going. We can talk about any number of other things as well related to water. But that's kind of geared toward the next, the next step. So we just focus really on the contents here and depending on the feedback at the, at the moment, the, there's a planning and zoning review, the code published for July the nineteenth. As a code change to chapter sixteen. And they will present a recommendation to board trustees and which could be coming July the twenty fifth. All right, then depending on that result, I think that this would be a good way, opportunity, we can put the word Torium early if it's so fits, then if not, that's fine, we'll just keep going. So these, there's some proposed changes here in. One is to codify the water allocation policy itself. We made those buckets, you know, the different categories, how much water would be infill would be for a commercial, et cetera, but we have to put that language in. So that's one thing that tonight does, and I'll go through the specifics. We also want to add some flexibility in the language, so what water the town actually could accept or could consider for dedication. And we'll go through that. We also want to set some boundaries to, for how long the town will obligate water to development. Part of this has to do with we need housing as well. We don't have much water, so how do we know those two together? We've talked quite a bit about different options for those, so. And then we clean up the code language, renumbering some things and and stuff like that, the code always needs to be updated, so. The, so broad brush stroke, so there's, we're gonna talk about two chapters. One is chapter thirteen and one is chapter sixteen. Chapter thirteen, chapter sixteen has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we're gonna take thirteen and sixteen to PC. Chapter sixteen, chapter thirteen discusses water going outside of town. It's called, at the moment, Water Main Extension. So one change, let's identify that easier and say, let's call it extraterritorial water. So it's just an inch. The other, and this is throughout, but we're gonna take, eliminate the term water rights because that restricts any kind of water dedication, et cetera, that we could accept, could consider. Still has to be approved by all of our town legal experts, water experts, and use phrases like adequate water or adequate water supply. There are a couple of process items. And let me just interject too, if you guys have a question about one of these right now, as we're going through, just, you know, if we're gonna address it now, that's fine too. But they're just probably six or seven, that's all. Process items, so if you're currently, if you want to annex, you have to do a water service agreement in an annexation agreement. But the annexation agreement can contain everything of the, you know, the, the contents of the water service agreement. So it's a redundant process. Recommend just taking one, one step. There's also, we'd like to reduce the steps in requesting that water right now. There's a formal request made. It's real general, we come to the board, we get the input, we go back, and then there's more detail, the board, approval. So we just want to have more info upfront, reduces the step for, steps for the applicant, but more importantly for you also. And this is just cleaning up the language in terms of timing for payment of dedication for individual lots is at, we wanted to add billing permit, excuse me, for yeah, it needs to match chapter sixteen. So right now, there are two different timings, so we want it to be at the billing permit phase instead of the CO phase. Right now, it talks about CO and it's kind of risky if you're a builder and you start your building and then you get to your CO and we've run out of water after you've built all of, all of your house, so.
We like to change that to billing permit.
The others are for chapter sixteen. So this again, let's make sure before we do the construction, that you evaluate that water and the water right and the commitment before you do construction. So to clean up. Number two throughout this incorporates the water allocation policy. And again, reiterates that allowance for evaluation, because right now we don't say there's a water allocation policy. This will say you have to follow this. These are our minds. So this is, gets into when a developer can have water and for how long. Okay, and this is probably the meat of the conversation of the last few months is how we're gonna work on this and how we're gonna find that balance and equity. So any individual or any developer, when I say developer, I mean just, you know, as soon as you go on to build a house, you own a lot, right? Everyone needs the same opportunity as close as we can with the mechanisms that we have. And it's all gonna be, it's the best we can do is what we strive for. So a single lot, we're not proposing any changes right now. When you're ready to build, you go, you get your billing permit, then you, instead of CO, you pay for that water dedication, you have water, you build your place. The minor subdivision, we're distinguishing that from a major subdivision primarily so we don't have people just subdividing one lot, getting a water dedicated and then sitting on that forever, right? And so it goes to, I have a minor subdivision, I can subdivide that lot. That lot is its own parcel and that person can sell it, but there's not necessarily that water dedication until someone's ready to build. Okay, so there's not the, the potential for sucking up or hedging on, on that water for a minor subdivision. The major subdivision. Okay, so here's this, this proposal. We, you know, we definitely heard from the community that initial throw something at the, you know, the wall timeframe was way too short that we heard, let's have thirty five, excuse me, twenty five years or so for subdivision to have, have that guarantee of water, because of financing issues and things like that. Which would be fantastic, but we, we have to pay attention to the, the water and we need housing. Okay, so part of the, the initial thought was for shorter phases of that construction source happening, et cetera. And this has gone through a lot of scenario testing with the legal team and, and myself, what if this, what if that, et cetera. And it's the proposal that we're putting forth right now. So as currently paid public improvement agreement, just like it is. Then you have that water dedicated for X number of years. We had thirteen really is, I guess it technically will split the difference from that initial three years to twenty five years with a little allowance toward a little longer. The draft ordinance, the legal team put in ten years for that. Some folk have ideas that this is much too short and other folks have ideas that, you know, there's a lot of activity in the county right now that they demonstrate a shorter time period is doable, so. And we happy to do more research on that. If we can pull some other developments within the county, it'd be a small and short, small population study for that might not give great results, but it could.
I just have a quick question. Would the ten to thirteen, would that mean they would have to be completed with their project?
Yeah, the proposal is after, after thirteen years, that obligation, you don't have to be completed, but that obligation would go away. And then we could think about some mechanism to, where you, you have to buy more water.
Gotcha, gotcha. So they're like halfway through their project and they were moving on it, but then they, whatever hit the, the thirteen year mark, they'd have to kind of start, start over with potentially getting water in place for this second half. Got it, got it, okay.
And keep in mind too, this is based on, we have three sea vessels of water right now. We have potential fifty acre feet with the upper arc coming online, but we haven't finished that agreement, right? Meeting with upper arc tomorrow morning, hopefully we'll have some progress on that. We also have Bray Allen, we've got a dry field, we've got some water rights that we are going to convert to municipal somehow and use those. And so there's opportunity to, to change this, especially for those developments that are.
I'm just curious, I'm like, is that mean that's done? Is it just starting or what?
Yeah, so that's the, that's how it's written is that, yeah, thirteen years, there you go, but you can, you know, it's not like, hey, you can't do your development anymore, you just have to reobligate somehow.
Make a quick comment?
Yes, please, Jeff.
Sorry, sorry, and I should have, you know, but y'all know that I'm here to, to, to add a few comments if I see something that might be relevant or you can ask me questions too. I don't want to jump into Bill's presentation, but just to be clear, the way the reservation works is, is that after, let's say it's thirteen. After the thirteen years, if you have not obtained a building permit to proceed with however many SFEs you've got left to construct, you, you basically lose your reservation of that SFE. So if the town has plenty of water and it's not out of water, you're, no problem for you. You can get a building permit in sixteen years, whatever. You don't have to buy a new, pay a new fee in lieu or find new water. But if the town's out of water, you basically lost your reservation. So you'd have to either wait until the town acquires more water resources. You wouldn't have to pay a new fee in lieu. You basically just have to wait. If you were able to find more water for the town, you could obviously come to the town and say, hey, you know, I already paid. I've got more water, however I did it. And then you could, you could proceed with that extra water you're bringing. But just to be clear, you don't like start again at square zero. You don't have to pay a whole other fee in lieu. You're just basically losing the reservation in the event the town lacks enough water to provide you with water at the time you actually go to get a building permit.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So to Gina's point, the project doesn't have to be completed, it just has to have, have a building permit to keep the reservation, okay?
And the way, way it works, and Joe, you're probably gonna talk about this next, sorry, is that, you know, you, once you get a building permit, you get another eighteen months to connect to the system.
Okay.
So, you know, whatever the time period is you decide on, it's gonna be that plus eighteen months. But there's some nuances, but I'll, I'll stop there. That's, I just want to make sure we're clear on, on that issue.
Thank you, that helps.
Yeah, so this is Jeff and Joe, I think, but listening to the water round table, whatever they all had. One of the questions that popped up around this specifically was Colorado state law, you can't use water in speculation or land regulation or some along those lines. And it kind of got brushed over and people talked over each other. I just didn't know, have we, would, would this be, Jeff, for this be up to snuff on whatever that law was, what was mentioned on that? I was just some curious.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's always super dangerous when I start talking water law, but you know, you want to talk to Cindy to get the details. But the deal is with a municipal entity, when you've, when you've basically acquired water rights to serve municipality, it's not considered speculation if it basically meets your legitimate water plans to serve the community. So you, you've already, you've already got the water rights. If you get water rights, it's gonna serve a development. You, you should be okay with the, with the anti-speculation doctrine. So I don't think it's an issue for you in this case.
Do building permits expire?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, sure. So, you know, what, what happens is you, you pay, you either dedicate. Well, I think one thing we also probably want to mention, at least in the draft ordinance, there's two ways for you to basically provide water for your development. The first is to actually dedicate an adequate water supply. And we've changed that definition from water rights to water supply, which would then allow the town to basically accept different types of water supplies, wouldn't have to just, just be a water right dedication. It could be upper arc, org certificates, whatever the town thinks is appropriate. So one option is to dedicate an adequate water supply. If you dedicated an adequate water supply under the current draft, you actually bring water. You don't, that, the reservation period doesn't apply. You get your water indefinitely. So it's not gonna be, it's not gonna ever expire if you've brought your own water. It only expires if you pay a fee in lieu. It only expires if you pay a fee in lieu to actually purchase the right to use town water. So that's the, that's the first issue. But assuming that you basically um. Uh, you you pay paid a fee in lieu, which is probably gonna be the case in a lot of these, but you pay the fee a fee in lieu. You get a building permit at some point in your reservation period, like the ten or thirteen year period, you get a building permit. Okay, your reservation period ends, you know, there's no more reservation period. You then get eighteen months to connect to the town's water system, so you you build your house, you connect to the system, you have eighteen months to do that. Um, uh, and if you don't do it in the eighteen months, you lose the additional eighteen month reservation that comes with a building permit. And as with the ten or thirteen year reservation period. You don't have to, um, you don't lose your ability to get water, you only have to wait if the town has run out in that eighteen month period. Or you have to find a way to bring more water. So yet, so it's a long answer to a short question, which is eighteen month building permit period.
I I have to go back, I have a question, you're gonna change, but you you're you're moving away from the terminology of water rights to water supply, so that the town. Can accept that part of water. Does that mean the town must accept?
Nope.
Other types of water.
Sorry, Joe, you can answer that one better.
Well, I just, it it um is, it's all up to where town is and what, you know, where our goals are and what our needs are. Um, what the water is, if it fits in the portfolio or not, those.
So that that truly does a lot of the time reflects blow to evaluate, but this town can still say for this particular. Project, this particular water doesn't seem right.
That's exactly right, you know, and there's actually a definition of what's an adequate water supply in your land use code, and it has a bunch of factors that the town will consider. But ultimately, you get to decide whether you want to accept these water rights. Um, that's generally how it works everywhere, you know, you you basically developers or a property owner will give you certain water rights and you'll say, yeah, you know what? The way that fits into our system, it's just not gonna work, or it's gonna generate a lot less, you know, water than we than than we um. And the developer has it well, but it's totally the town's decision based on advice from the town's experts.
And that's on a case by case basis.
Yeah, and some of that will have to do with the infrastructure, right? The gallery will kind of back up to since we have in place. You know, do we want to take whatever risk is associated with that water? How it works. Yeah, I think this probably some of the nuances, Jeff, you know, Jeff probably um, I see, but. Uh, question, um, yeah, tying some of these public improvements into major developments or tying this into public improvements into major developments. So we have, you know, we have some different methods involved in how we're constructing. South Main, um, the farm, you know, they they're constructing on site. Whereas Sunset Vista Projects, they're constructing the public improvements in there. You know, they're pre-tapping individual lots that then become the, you know, the future lot owners responsibility to to construct on, right? So, but those methods in place, I mean, once, I'm just kind of curious, because I think it probably come up and, you know, and I and I have to speed myself on how that would be. Because I mean, the the phases for um Sunset Vista, you know, we accept once the public improvements are done and. Inspected our streets and our roads, our curb and gutter and our in our water and our sewer and things like that. And then the developers selling those lots off to individuals to construct on while they have curve valves already stepped to the property line. Um, you know, I just thought I'd kind of bring that up a little bit, you know, because it might be unclear for for that style of developer. Or. So you guys know what, in in the scenario of like Sunset Four where they um, put all the infrastructure in minus the house and they sell those lots. What's the timing where that lot will will have water? Yeah, yeah. And Jeff, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, it all depends upon when they paid the fee in lieu or when they made their water dedication. So if, you know, for example, I don't think this is accurate, but if if South Main dedicated water. Uh, brought an adequate water supply, they'd have an indefinite time period to to connect. If South Bay paid a fee in lieu, whatever they do, I mean, like, say they they do the stub outs, whatever. If they paid the fee in lieu five years previously, they'd have five more years to get a building permit, then they then they'd have eighteen months to build. If they pay the fee in lieu, when they've stubbed it out, they'd have ten years plus eighteen months to get a building permit. So um, it really depends upon when they paid the initial fee in lieu. That's when the ten year or the thirteen year period starts to run.
And forgive forgive me, but uh, me another facet of trying to clarify. What I thought of when I heard your question is what does it mean to connect to the system? Right? Because um, the water main is the towns, but then that that length for the curve valve is that connection. And and when we talked about this before, we had talked about connection being defined as water meter installation. And I might help clarify that regardless of whether you have a stub and a curve valve installed or not, and you have to do it. You have, you are connected when you put in a water meter, not when you have a curve valve. I just wonder if that might help that that way.
Yeah, yeah, good point, okay.
Better answer than mine, Joseph, appreciate that. And yeah, and basically, basically, it's once after building permit. And basically, once water is, the structure's ready to receive water, which, you know, and the meter gets installed pretty much is one of the last steps in the process.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Peter?
Uh, yeah, um, just to clarify, you're kind of looking for guidance on what to then bring to PNC on this, correct? Um, in in one of, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but when this is presented to be in PNC beforehand, one of their. I don't think complaints, but the pushback was, you know, where did you get this ten years or in that case, this five years, where where's the data behind this? So, you know, to your point you're saying, do we want to go to the county and find more information? And I guess my concern is I don't want us to go back to them, like, well, we still don't have enough data, and then we go back and then again, it's kicking cannons. And I think the more that we can have any data to back it up and during that presentation so that we can kind of, it's either up or down, we're going, we're not, but at least we can kind of. Move on it. So I think the more day we can have on that, the better and wherever, why we're basing it on that.
Fantastic.
Um, and then the other question I had is, after the five years and you're paying the maintenance fee, I'm assuming we also have written in there like. Some penalty if you miss a month and it's like, uh, you know. Another penalty and then after six months, you relinquish your rights or something like that or?
Um, yeah, that's uh, so the so the maintenance fee idea, let me explain that first and.
Yeah.
About that. So this was um. Jeff actually came up with this, is a in incentive to build, uh disincentive to not build, right? Um, and so after a after five years, here's this maintenance fee that is levied on any SFE that is um. Still gets to be used, okay, um, to encourage that, that fee itself, um, we, you know, it can escalate. You know, year six, you pay X, year seven, you pay. Could be X as well for a long period of time, and then it could go up or uh, and that would be described in the fee schedule. We we don't have the um, that number yet. I mean, we can make up a number, right? But but we don't really have that, but but the idea is it would be in the fee schedule. And this, we still have a couple of months to get this, you know, approved and. Um, and then take effect, but the fee schedule can then change from year to year depending on the needs are, et cetera, you know, fee itself. Um, we haven't contemplated what happens for a penalty if you do not pay. Uh, how long do you not pay until you just lose that, you know, lose that? I don't know, Jeff, do you have any any thoughts on sort of this uh, punitive? If you don't pay this maintenance fee, what happens?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could, we could make it anything, but, you know, first of all, I think the concept of the maintenance fee serves a couple of different purposes, you know. The town has water and, you know, maintaining that water, you know, building on the water supply, making sure that the town's maintaining its water rights. That all costs the town money. And so the fact that you paid for something ten years ago or five years earlier, you know, that that generally isn't just your only payment. You know, the town will basically deal with um, paying for its water system with its rates and fees and other things as well. And as long as its water is being held up and not being used, the town's not getting any rates and fees. So the maintenance fee can also be used to help the town maintain the water that it's basically reserving for these developments. So that's one reason for a maintenance fee. Another reason for a maintenance fee is almost like a tiered tiered water system, like. You know, if if you, if you had the same price for for every gallon of water you use, no matter how much water you used. You know, the disincentive to use a ton of water isn't there, so a lot of, you know, a lot of water providers have, you know, different tiers based on how much water you use. And the more you use, the the higher the rate gets over certain tiers. So this is kind of the the concept as well is that, you know, you you got so many years, it could be five, it could be ten or or could be six, could be three. The concept is at some point the town, you know, wants to make sure that you're you're paying attention. And you're basically incentivized to to connect that water and get that place built. Uh, I know developers have an incentive to do that, and obviously they're gonna do as fast as they can, but you know, there's, the town has incentives to make sure that that happens. So um, that's sort of the reason for for having a maintenance fee, that's sort of the justification behind it. Um, the penalty ultimately would be you lose your reservation, you'd lose that SFE or those SFEs. You don't pay, you don't pay a fee to maintain something, you don't get to have it anymore. And so the concept would be is that you lose it, it's a yearly maintenance fee, I mean, that's it's an annual maintenance fee. So, you know, I guess the town could put in some process where it's due December thirty first of every year. You don't pay it, maybe you get a grace period, it's a notice provided, you know, you have a process where you don't just take it away a day later. But ultimately, you lose your water, and that's kind of the ultimate. That's what I contemplated happening.
Jeff, would we need this uh process if that's something the board wants uh within this ordinance at this time?
Yeah, I I have to read the language, I have to read the language we have in here right now. Um, you know, maybe we, maybe we want to add a couple of sentences to clarify, well, what happens if you don't pay it? Um, I guess we kind of assumed it was kind of clear, but I think maybe it would make sense to be clear. But I guess I can't, yeah, I can't really think of. What will be another reasonable result if you don't pay that maintenance fee?
Um, well, let's uh, we'll go through the rest of this and see what input the board has and if that's something the board.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I gotta.
Yeah.
Um, thanks, Jeff. So we're talking maintenance fee and. Is that it?
That's all.
All right, that was it. Uh, so opportunity for discussion questions, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
So if a question, um, it's tains to water and how many, you know, it pertains to this, but. Um, and I didn't get a chance to send it to you earlier, so not sure, totally okay, I'll catch you later with it. But if we um, we have any idea how many lots we have left in town? Like how many or how many more SFEs we need if we were to fill town based on current zoning? Right? Because I know, you know, but is there a ballpark? Because I was just thinking about like, okay. How many more SFEs, you know, do we want to purchase if we do want to obviously fill out town? And then, you know, what we have now, and then um, actually Dan had mentioned, you know, the the interim water policy right between. Like if we're trying to get more in between, right now, like, just thinking in, you know, big picture, how many do we actually have? And just thinking about that, how it will apply to obviously some of the things we're discussing here. But, so I don't know if you have that ballpark number, and again, I was thinking about that today.
Yeah, yeah, I've I've got some from like a year plus, but you have, you had more.
Just kept it up. Yeah, I mean, we, it, as you alluded to, that the fine tuning of that number is extremely difficult, just because folks can do so much even within current zoning.
Right.
The the number that we came up with um, in thinking through a kind of a medium. Medium density within each zone district approach to full development within our current municipal boundaries. The number was around eighteen hundred SFE of remaining capacity. Again, that's sort of a, this medium road could be much higher, could be lower if folks want to build out lower density. That was the number that I think.
No, that's helpful. Just thinking about all of this, like, where are we at in terms of what is left with town proper municipal boundaries? And then thinking about what we have and then, you know, what's feasible with, you know, if there's all these fees or how much more, we do need to think about purchasing in the timeframe into ten, thirteen years. But just knowing what is possible for building out. Just as some baseline stuff, so thank you for that. I know it wasn't quite in line with this, but it's baseline understanding.
Joseph, is that number after the um current water rights? Or that's all remaining?
It's not even thinking about supplies, just looking at municipal boundaries and saying, if folks planted that. How many land acres we have, like ninety some acres of vacant land, um, to the extent they could in the zone district. They could potentially build around eighteen hundreds.
I guess, let me refer, does that include the planted like South Main and Farm? Okay, it includes all that, so, like, yeah.
Thank you. That is more curiosity in my overall thought process.
And those are the best properties to develop, really, because the infrastructure is already there.
Well, to be clear, infrastructure is not there for the rest of those eighteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
I mean, yeah, infrastructure, if we were talking about infrastructure ready to build, we can narrow that down a hundred SFE, right?
It's a fairy tale.
So.
But we have two, we have two major subdivisions in the process right now that are planning to put the infrastructure in and. Right, so so I just want to reiterate. We're not only looking at a hundred SFEs of current development, ready to to go. That number is going to expand just with what's in the process now. Um, but but to to your to your question about that. Um, I think that is a really good perspective, especially going into the water strategy discussion.
Yeah.
Meaning because a lot of these things, um, and I think Jeff Parker has said it multiple times. Our or fluid, our water rights portfolio is fluid, and we already have things in the works to add to that. So um, it it's very likely that ten years from now. Some of this won't even be relevant in a sense that we'll have enough available water. That they're not faced with losing their reservation and having to sit.
Correct.
Without water. Um, so it. I don't necessarily want to use the term interim, but it it can be, you can start to view that uh timeline, if you will. Um, this gives a lot of protections, it also gives some predictability about what happens if.
So the transit.
Some of these things we're planning on, right? Or if we uh, the pace of development picks up versus as we're adding, you know, if we get into a situation again. You know, ten years from now, and we're at a pinch point again, there's a framework on how to.
Sure.
But how to behave during those times. So it's a good perspective, I think that should plays into the discussion tonight and. Uh, it's a child energy discussion for the next session.
Thank you guys for that. For, sorry, putting you on the spot with that question.
Other questions for Joe, Jeff?
Sorry, I had a lot of time today.
Yeah, good.
The uh, first, I appreciate you, uh, Dan coming tonight and sitting through this and listening and, I mean, I'm sure we're doing it, but I appreciate it. A comment to you, I think, you know, one of the things I've mentioned often is with these discussion memos, I really want to hear like opposing points of view. Uh, while we're having these discussions to really understand what we're walking into. So like with the PNC meeting that you'll present this to, I can imagine it being quite contentious. So I didn't know, have there been conversations beyond previous conversations we've had with the developers in the community of, you know, I know it was like twenty five years or. We don't want any of it really, and then we had five, and then we're here, have there been previous discussions that you all been having? Kind of, you know, not behind closed doors, whatever, like not here in public. To see if there is a number that is a bit more agreeable, that's more of a compromise, it's more workable or. The kind of, we're in, we're at an impasse, we're moving forward.
Well, it's it's uh, you know, built a lot on the, you know, that roundtable work session in here that we had and then um. Talking with the legal team primarily, and then we have this, you know, had some input, just. More hearsay kind of thing, I I think it's too too long, you know, so, and that's why we can, you know, take a look at some of the data to kind of help support that before PNC. But um, but the idea that. Outside of putting this forward as sort of this, let's let's get something out here. Um, that's been kind of the focus, building on the last year of, you know. I have another perspective as someone that kind of sat on the sideline and listened to the last several uh months of discussion. I also feel like there was uh concern from the board itself about having an open ended. Oh, yeah. Long term uh timeframe on this and um. I felt like that became a direction back to staff as well, like we need to, we need to put something in place. It may not be perfect and it is likely to change. We got to wrap this up. Yeah, so I, I I've kind of felt that direction as well.
I don't agree with that. I mean, that's my, so I just didn't know if there have been additional conversations and.
I I would say Joseph has done a great job kind of bringing a balanced input into it. Um, our legal team has given us a uh, a lot more conservative number. The ten to thirteen is kind of in the middle of some of this. As well. Yeah, I like the idea of the maintenance fee to is giving it just a little more teeth to get. It going a little more, I think, ten to thirteen is totally reasonable amount of time. Um, you know, I feel like any developer is going to want no time and have. Free for all to do however long it takes. And I I think that's not reasonable with how much water. We currently have. So obviously, if we get some other load, we can have a water park.
On the Joe's phone, I think you mentioned this, but this is what upper arc does too, right? Like they don't. They won't give away oxygens unless that development is already in the works in a certain part, because basically they don't want people sitting on it. What is their timeline? Do we know or?
I I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, I I do know that they start charging charging up sizable maintenance fee day one. Yeah, you you pay, whether whether you're using it or not, you're paying administrative and storage costs and things.
You better be ready to go.
Absolutely.
With the maintenance fee, does it have to like so? I mean, maybe we need it for all the maintenance of things, but if, like, could that also be used to help acquire more water? Like, could it be put towards other things or does it have to be infrastructure focused with the that fee or is it kind of? So I know like with uh, you know, in town fees and tech, whatever, like all this, you have to have. Exact reason for why you're collecting it, but I was wondering if we had an abundance for some reason, like could we utilize that to help us? Potentially purchase more water in different ways.
Yeah, the answer, yeah, the answer to that question is yes, um, because basically, you know, nobody's reserving any particular drops of water. They're reserving water that the town has to serve and that water comes from all different sources. And you know, every year the town is going to be um, looking to, you know, maintain its water supply, get more water. And so, you know, the water that that might be going through your tap for that development in year one, it's different than the water going through that tap in year nine. So, yeah, I mean, you can basically go towards anything that's that's basically needed. Uh, by the town to make sure that it has enough water when those people come and ask for it. And that could be water rights, it could be infrastructure to get the water out. Yes, anything related to the water is a legitimate use of those fees.
Thank you.
So what direction are you looking for? Are you looking for motion and uh? Um, what's kind of? I guess really if there's um. Well, one, if you guys are open to Jeff taking a look at the sentences in there for some kind of punitive. Um, if we don't have any teeth, what happens if you don't pay that maintenance fee? What happens?
On that front, you mentioned at one step, like you you said you would not go back to square zero. For like if you ran out of time, if you didn't pay your maintenance fees, would you just lose it all?
Um, and that I think Jeff, if you didn't pay your maintenance fee, would you, would you have to rededicate, buy new dedication or just lose the the? The water, how do you envision that?
Well, so there, you know, frankly, there's a lot of options here, you know, the con, the concept that if you don't, I I look at the maintenance fee as. It's part of what you pay to have the water. So if you didn't pay your fee in lieu. You would have no water, you would not get any wa, any any SFEs of service. So, you know, my thought is if you. If you don't pay the maintenance fee, which is just. Frankly, I drafted this differently initially. It'd basically been your fee in lieu was X dollars upfront. And X dollars of a maintenance fee every year, starting at whatever year. So that was your fee in lieu. And that's kind of the way I still look at it frankly, is that if you don't pay what you're supposed to be paying to get the water. Then you lose the water and you start again. You have to basically pay a new fee in lieu. But if you think that's too harsh, um, I tend to be harsh when it comes to water. It's such a valuable resource. It's the town's water. Um, you want it to be used. I I tend to basically be maybe a little more conservative on the town's behalf. I'm not trying to. Make enemies of the developers, but um, yeah, I guess my initial thought was you lose it and you have to basically get a new one. Pay a new fee in lieu to get a new new SFEs. Um, because I guess, I guess my thought is is that, you know. Pay your maintenance fee. It's it's what you have to pay to get these SFEs. And frankly, you could basically make the initial fee a little lower. So because you're getting maintenance fees every year. It isn't just supposed to be some, you know, incentive to make you, you know, use your, use these SFEs quicker. You know, maybe you're, maybe your initial fee is three thousand or four thousand versus five or six thousand, because you're going to get a maintenance fee, maybe. Um, so I I guess I look at it, you know, this is part of what you pay to to retain the right. But if you say, hey, look, you know what, we don't, we don't want to have them start again, maybe they just lose the reservation. And they have to just risk, risks having to wait. That's a potential option too, but. Frankly, I I thought that you would lose it and you'd have to buy whatever you've lost again.
Is there a leaning from the board on on that punitive have have that? And if you lose it, would you have to pay again?
Do we have anybody that we can consult that's actually doing something like this? I mean, this sort of fee structure?
There's the arc value, so there's some kind of structure that we're not sure of. Of the main, the maintenance fee for the. Yeah, for the. We can find out what 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 happens when you don't pay your maintenance fee.
I I can, I can bet that you lose it, but.
Yeah, and I like how Jeff phrases it as like, this is your fee. You know, this is your cash in lieu or whatever, or your fee in lieu. That it's not just. Here's the fee in lieu and here's this maintenance fee, it's part of the whole package. And I think that's a better way of looking at it as if you. Fill in that timeframe, you don't have to worry about this maintenance fee later on, but this is part of the fee in lieu. And if you don't pay your fee in lieu, you don't get your water.
Yeah, and for example, like, you know, I I think the town has this, I think most water providers have like a base fee structure. Where it doesn't really matter how much, if you if you don't use any water, you know, for a long time, you're still paying a base fee to maintain the system. Um, and so it's not, it's not too unusual, I don't believe. And and you know, I guess one of the, one of the concepts here is that you really don't want developers to be biting off more than they can chew. Um, because they just want to make sure they they reserve enough water and don't lose out to the detriment of people who could use that water. And so you want to have that balance. I hear, I heard the developers, they want to have enough assurance that they can actually, you know, get the financing to make their development and and need enough time. But the concept would be, well, the. You know, don't try and do a two hundred unit development. If you don't think you can do it in ten years or thirteen years, you know, you're going to have to basically do it in chunks, phase it out. Um, you know, if you if you're worried that you're going to not be able to do it all, yeah, then. Take a little less. So other developers who need water can have the right to do it. Really don't want to have, you know, developer taking more than they can use and whatever you think's a reasonable period of time. Because there, the assumption is there's other developers out there that will be able to use that water.
Excuse me, I really like what Jeff said about developers. Don't, don't come asking for water until you've got a project and you're ready to build and you plan on building it. I feel like the way that it's being developed now. That it is actually making the prices of housing higher because fewer developers and it's taken longer to develop. The units out. Um. And I honestly think ten to thirteen years is more than adequate and then. If they can't build in that timeline, other developers could be developing at the same time, making it. Housing more available and more affordable.
Yeah, and and you know, to to be fair to the developers, you know, there are economies of scale, you do, you know, you do save money by, you know, putting a lot of infrastructure in at once. Um, so you know, there is incentive for them to take a more, more water than. More water than rest because it it could be more expensive to build in little, in little chunks. But there's got to be a balance there and that's, I'm not advocating for ten years or three years or thirteen. I think there's got to be a balance there. And you know, the town can just look at this and say, well, let's just, if we said twenty years. There's, you know, developers obviously are going to want to build as fast as they can. I mean, you know, there there is that incentive there too. So you don't want to forget, they actually do have an incentive. To do it quickly. So they're going to say they don't need any more incentive. Which is fine, except for the fact that it's your water, it's your town water. And so you need to basically decide. What you're willing to to give. Because it's it's a scarce resource and it's probably the most valuable thing you could, you have as a town. So even if they have other motivations and, which is true. I think you still want to make sure that it's going as fast as you'd like, you'd like to see it go reasonably.
And it's just some like concept clarification. The intent is not at all to generate any kind of revenue. The intent is just behavior modification. If we're going to obligate or award you, our expectation is that you put it to beneficial use as soon as possible. And if you don't put it to beneficial use as soon as possible, we need to make sure it's going somewhere where it can. And so that, that fee structure, the main see whatever, in the best case scenario, we collect on it very rarely. It's just the psychology that people say, I got something laying out there. Once I've started, I need to finish.
I agree with that. So. I I do agree with that. That was the intent. Um. However, the one thing that does come to mind is as we've been negotiating with upper arc, as I've mentioned, since we buy. Water from them, we are, we are on the hook to be paying an ongoing maintenance fee. Okay, so. It, we, we obviously have a lot of other water operating costs that we, that we. Have our customers pay through monthly fees, uh, wire rate use and all that kind of thing. And then we have other fees for. Uh, connecting to the infrastructure or water dedication for water rights. It it does occur to me that if somebody is as, has a reservation or has obligated water. But it hasn't hooked up, there is an ongoing cost to town that we aren't recovering, we're not recovering. It goes beyond paying for the water right. It's ownership management of that portfolio. I think there could be an aspect to the fee that that does help cover that ongoing cost, especially if we're. Branching out our water portfolio to not just straight water rates, but other sources.
That fee recovery can't, should not be lumped into the existing repair. Burn, that needs to be born strictly by the developer. I think that would be a fair statement.
That's, that's the, the, the management of that is, is uh, even that's. Development should be paying. For what it is. Uh, the maintenance fee, et cetera, also, once we get this good geography secured and purchased. And get that toward paid off, uh, that we can look for additional fifty acre feet or whatever it might be, whatever the upper arc is comfortable with too. So um, punitive idea, let's take a look at that language. Um, and the ten to thirteen range in there, um. We'll take a look and try to get some supportive data and if it comes back as, uh, well, we'll just have a good discussion with P and C and a couple of what that might be. For you all. Other, other directions in this?
Um, other comments? In our packet, pages one seventy one through one seventy five was. Um, valuable information from the Water Advisory Board. Who's taken into consideration in what you're compiling here. I really liked that they had like a percentage of augmentation. Certifications, we, we, we don't want to get caught up in this long area. And I really liked the talking about the underground aquifer storage.
That, yeah, and we've talked about that underground before.
And I know it's more expensive, but it's also safer.
Yeah.
To protect our waters.
And we'll talk about some of that strategy. And a percentage two, that would, we would need to do some evaluation on that. That's, you know, that fifteen year feature now is what the upper arc is comfortable with. And we don't know how much more yet, yet, so, but we couldn't get anything. Yeah. Other, other points?
Uh, yeah, I mean, a lot more mainly on the, um, well, what you put together, uh, the water port, but um. So I'll save those for the next session. I guess one thing I just want to follow up and mention this in email, but ahead of our discussion. Uh, in a couple of weeks, if possible, and I understand the conversions are annoying, but if there's any way we can. Have a uniform conversation of either SFEs or acre feet or, uh, you know, like. So we could, as much as possible, when talking about water, keep it apples to apples. Um, when doing that discussion, if possible.
We will do our best for that and at least tell you why certain apples are red.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. So let's take a five minute break and then come back and talk about the budget adjustments.
We will do our best for that and at least tell you why certain apples are red. It's, yeah. Awesome.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the work on this.
Yeah, thank you so much for the work.
Sets the table. Sounds like we're making headway.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. So let's take a five minute break and then come back and talk about the budget adjustments. We are swisher and row. Um, all in favor? Is anyone opposed? The motion passes. Sorry.
Thanks, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your patience.
It was a very interesting evening. I learned a lot.
Come back. We do it every two weeks. All right, bye. Okay. Thank you all. And so now we will do the public hearing, which has to do with budget adjustments. So I'd like to, um, open the public hearing. And we'll hear from Philip. He's our treasurer.
Hi. Yeah. This was one, one heck of a packet. I'll say that. So, uh, this is the, uh, this is the time typically mid-year. We look to catch our budget up with things that have happened through the first half of the year. Um, budget amendments. So those are, those are times when the board has authorized expenses beyond what's currently in the budget and or new projects. Uh, so it allows us to adjust our budget so that for the second half of the year, we're, we're kind of following what all the puts and takes that have been authorized by the board or directed by the board during the first half of the year. So in your, in your packet on page one eighty-one is the staff memo. That is a, a summary by fund of, of all of the things that are included in the budget adjustment. I, one thing I do want to point out, uh, if you've noticed in my monthly treasure report, I try to show the list as we're going plus how things are going with sales tax. So you can kind of get a feel for how those adjustments are fitting into the sales tax. If we're running, um, in excess of our sales tax budget. In other words, we have some surplus monies to work with. I did not include sales tax adjustments in the budget adjustment. Primarily because it makes reporting kind of a headache on, on my part. So, um, you will see, you, you might notice in the supporting documentation that, uh, the general fund specifically, we're, we're still running a deficit in the approved budget, which, which we were originally anyway. That's primarily because we're moving three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds from the general fund to the water fund for the water treatment plant project. So that creates a deficit. That's still roughly where we're at in the general fund. Um, but I didn't adjust our revenues up in the general fund. And we've kept them, um, on target. So we're, I'll still show you as we're progressing through the year, how our sales taxes are doing year to date. Um, but that, that is not included in the adjustments. Uh, the other few things to point out are to kind of warn the capital improvement fund where we have received quite a bit of grant funding specific to, oh, where did they go? Sorry, uh, like our carbon and street housing revenues, things like that. So it's kind of catching up on where we're at with, with grant funding. So, uh, overall, I, the, the adjusted budgets, uh, still look, uh, fair. We're not dipping into fund balances anymore than we originally were. In fact, we're, we're spending less into fund balance primarily because of some of the grant funds that we have received. Uh, so from, from a, from a finance standpoint, um, it still leaves our budgets in good shape. I'll pause there. What? I'm sorry, before I say that. There's two resolutions to approve. The first one is approving adopting the adjusted budget. The second one is appropriating the funds to, uh, to essentially cover that budget. So, um, if you have any questions, I'll take those. If not, the two resolutions are there for you to consider approving.
I don't really follow, um, on the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
You know, the, the increase in the expense and the, and the, uh, grant money.
Sure.
So when I look at the report now, it looks like we would spend three hundred and thirty-five thousand on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, uh, so it's a good question. So, um, the original budget assumed that we were going to spend roughly seventy-five thousand total for that project with, I think roughly sixteen thousand coming from a planning grant of some sort. Um, we then found out that one, this effort costs a lot more than that. Um, but DOLA awarded us one hundred thousand.
Can't tell you the specifics about how all that happened, but in essence, what what I saw was that. A building permit was issued, a CO was given, um and then everything basically was said okay. Um but later was discovered that there uh is a slight encroachment into the town's right away. Uh at the max, it's it's roughly six inches, half a foot. Uh but it's it's not consistent, it gets smaller from there. So uh the owner who is who is here tonight, Mr. Walsh, um in case you have any questions, uh he's he's been patient enough to. Hang in there uh with the meeting, but if there's any questions, uh I'm sure you'd be happy to to answer them, but. Uh from from Towns perspective, we uh we wanted to come up with uh an agreement. Um and I think it has achieved a few things. One, it helps give him some assurances. Um so that essentially um. And the property is not subject to the town at any point coming in and saying, okay, now you have to tear that down. Um to mitigate this, um because essentially that would make, that would put quite a bit of risk. Whether they're looking to sell the property or change the use at some point, those types of things where town re-looks at. Um so giving them uh more assurances considering that was not uh necessarily their fault. And uh at the same time, uh ma- maintaining the fact that this is the town's right away. Uh and that it at some point, if the building were to be destroyed past a certain point, I think it's it's shown as sixty percent. Uh or it's gonna be rebuilt that. We wouldn't repeat the same error, right? The 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 encroachment uh would be corrected. So that's essentially what's before you is is what what's termed an easement agreement. I think the the. The agreement reads, explains things pretty well in layman's terms, and if you have any specific questions. I'd be happy to lean on Jeff and or uh Mr. Walsh if you have questions. And Joseph might remember some things about this as well in his prior days, but he's not giving me any, any like. Motions or anything, so uh I'll stop there. Any questions?
So I read this and don't have an issue with it, but would you show the picture up there again, please?
Uh absolutely, uh. Let me, let me just up share so that I can share.
The old barber shop?
It is, yeah. Yeah, so here's North Court Street, Chestnut Street, so it's here in here on the corner, um and it's. And it's this area right here. We, we do anticipate as as development continues down uh North Court Street, that we'll have sidewalks, things like that. Um there's plenty of right away in that area that's six inches. Didn't feel was going to impact the ability to have a wide enough sidewalk. And and uh other components on the right away there, so it it did uh. It didn't appear that we were harming Towns' ability or Development's ability to build that out in the future.
But I also have no objection, but what is the current use of the building?
Uh currently, it is long-term rentals.
Okay.
And I had one of the tenants move out, um so it'll probably go back to to long-term tenants. But it is mixed use, so possibility of business or something like that.
Okay.
Could happen in the future.
Alright, thank you.
So with that, I would like to make a motion. To approve Resolution number forty, series twenty twenty-three. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Beavis to Colorado. Approving an easement agreement for an encroachment on Town Right Away adjacent to one sixteen. North Court Street, Colorado.
We have Swisher and Row. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Thanks, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your patience.
It was a very interesting evening. I learned a lot.
Come back. We do it every two weeks.
Alright, bye. Okay. Thank you all, and uh so now we will do the public hearing. Which has to do with uh budget adjustments, so I'd like to um open the public hearing. And we'll hear from Philip.
This was one, one heck of a packet, I'll say that. So uh this is the uh, this is the time typically mid-year we look. Uh catch our budget up with things that have happened through the first half of the year. Um budget amendments, so those are, those are times when the board has authorized expenses beyond what's currently in the budget. And or new projects, uh so it allows us to adjust our budget so that. For the second half of the year, we're we're kind of following what all the the puts and takes that have been authorized by the board. Uh or directed by the board during the first half of the year, so. In your, in your packet on page one eighty-one is the staff memo that is. A a summary uh by fund of of all of the things that are included in the budget adjustment. One thing I do want to point out, uh if if you've noticed. Um in my monthly treasure report, I try to show the list. As we're going plus how things are going with sales tax, so you can kind of get a feel for. How those adjustments are fitting into the sales tax if we're running. Um in excess of our sales tax budget, in other words, we have some surplus monies to work with. I did not include sales tax adjustments in the budget adjustment. Primarily because it makes reporting kind of a headache on on my part, so. Um you will see, you you might notice in the supporting documentation that uh. The uh general fund specifically, we're we're still running a deficit in the approved budget, which which we were originally anyway. That's primarily because we're moving three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds from the general fund to the water fund. For the water treatment plant project, so that creates a deficit. That's still roughly where we're at in the general fund. Um but I didn't adjust our revenues up in the general fund. And we've kept them um on target, so we're, I'll still show you as we're progressing through the year how our sales taxes. Are doing year-to-date, um but that, that uh is not included in the adjustments. Uh the other uh few things to to point out. Are to kind of warn the capital improvement fund where we have received quite a bit of grant funding. Specific to, oh, where did they go? Sorry, uh uh like our carbon and street housing revenues. Things like that, so it's kind of catching up on where we're at with with grant funding. So uh overall, I, the the adjusted budgets uh still look uh fair. We're not dipping into to fund balances anymore than we originally were. In fact, we're 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 spending less into fund balance primarily because of some of the grant funds that we have received. Uh so from, from a, from a finance standpoint, um it still leaves our budgets in good shape. I'll pause there, but I, sorry, before I say that, uh there's two resolutions to approve. The first one is approving, adopting the adjusted budget. The second one is appropriating the funds to uh to essentially cover that budget, so. If you have any questions, I'll take those. If not, the two resolutions are there for you to consider approving.
I don't really follow um on the uh comprehensive plan.
Okay.
You know, the the increase in the expense and the, and the uh grant money.
Sure.
So when I look at the report now, it looks like we would spend three hundred and thirty-five thousand on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, uh so it's a good question, so um the original budget assumed that we were gonna spend roughly seventy-five thousand. Total for that project with, I think roughly sixteen thousand coming from a planning grant of some sort. Um we then found out that one, this effort costs a lot more than that. Um but DOLA awarded us one hundred thousand. It's a, it's a fifty-fifty uh grant, so what we've done is loaded two hundred thousand for the total expense with one hundred thousand in revenue. So a net one hundred thousand expect. How that translates back to the budget, it's the expenses included in the planning department professional fees budget. Which is a combination of the comp plan plus other expenses in the pla- in the planning department. Uh that covers things like RG's services, a lot of other things that the planning, so the planning, the total. Professional fees budget is now increased to three twenty-five, but that covers more than just the comp plan. The comp, the comp plan is just a sub, the two hundred thousand dollar subset of that budget.
Okay.
Does that clarify that?
Yeah, that helps, yeah. Anybody else have questions? I guess that I would. I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions? Anybody online?
Mr. Parker?
Alright, so no comments from the public, I'll close the public comment period. And. I think we're ready to cause the public hearing and and pass, I mean uh. Except, I would accept a motion for passing the resolution. Number forty, series twenty twenty-three.
I would make a motion to.
Oh, thank you, forty-one, sorry.
I would make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution forty-one. Do you want me to read that?
I'll second it.
The roll call.
Yeah, I think it's a roll call.
Trusty Cobb?
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Henga?
Yes.
I see the Crepsey?
Yes.
Trusty Rice?
Yes.
Trusty Rowe?
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. And now there's a second motion required for uh resolution number forty-two. Do I hear a motion for that?
I shall move.
Approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have Cobb and Hilton Henga. And we'll do a roll call on that as well, please, Paula.
Okay, Trusty Swisher?
Yes.
Trusty Rowe?
Yes.
Trusty Rice?
Yes.
Trusty McCrancy?
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Henga?
Yes.
And Trusty Cobb?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And now we're at a point in our meeting, um so trustee staff interaction. So um. If anyone wants to start? Volunteers? Sorry?
Yeah, I'll I'll jump in.
Okay.
So, uh you, do you mind?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so um yeah, so thanks, I probably could have put all this in the staff report. I say twenty twenty. But the um the take, um the bits that we received, there were, there were. Eight, and I believe five of them were within what we budgeted for the project. Um mayor, I just want to, you know, we don't have a mural identified as for part of the scope services, but we did. Um get standards, our our specifications, if we were gonna do a mural, we have that method already in there, and so. I guess just, you know, bringing it up right now, and if it's something that, you know, you all would like to budget for for next year, just let me know and I'll. I'll work on the OBC on that, so just bringing that up. We have some time to think about that, but it is something that we really want to get back on from the things, just just.
Yeah, I sent a message to JP Arts, but I haven't heard back.
Yeah. Well, we can come up with a number if if that's something that we want to pursue. I think it would probably be next year. It's gonna look great without anything on it, just being, no one's ever gonna notice it, they won't see it, they're like, hey, you got tanks, I don't know where they are, well, it's because they don't have murals on them. I'm I'm joking. I got a few things to go through, but I just bringing that up for for uh for perspective and.
Thank you.
Awareness. Uh yeah, we have uh some fantastic advisory boards, and I'm having a hard time keeping up with them. Um uh we have uh some really good things that are happening with the Water Advisory Board and with the Tree Advisory Board. Um but one of the things, like, it's it's just like, it's really fantastic. Uh Jeff Olger is just an incredible asset to the Water Advisory Board. He's done some fantastic things, and there's a couple action items that I have on my plate because of what he's been able to provide, and. One, one in uh particular is, is it's pretty high level and it's good that Jeff's here because I think it has to do with um kind of amending the water supply. Um water supply protection district uh applications, and so I wanted to kind of make sure that we have that process. Looking at the code, kind of looks like it's a town administrator kind of call on something like that, but also it's something that I want to make sure that, you know, we get. Get some eyes on it, because I think it's always gonna be helpful, because, you know, we're just gonna see more and more development in the county and our water supply. But I just wanted to recognize that. It's something that I've been trying to get done now for probably a little over a month, and I just can't quite bring it up to. Uh the top of my list to do, and I I definitely don't want Jeff mad at me, he's like a guy you do not want mad at you, so I don't want him mad at me. Uh he's fantastic, but those are things, it's it's like really fantastic, but it's just like, yeah, how do I, how do I kind of manage this? Try to get it done with it, you know, time, so I'm bringing it up because it's it's really fantastic, and you know, just. It's it's a, it's a great opportunity for me, you know, um happy to have that down. One of the things like that I really wanna kind of talk about, you know, I don't wanna go back to it, but if you. Had a chance to read the statement that I put in my staff report from Sangre to Crystal Electric, uh regarding, you know, their. Potential significant impact, you know, on the municipality, I mean, we have, you know, when you read it, there's a lot of unknowns there, and I don't want to jump to conclusions. Or assume that the worst, but I, but I, but we do have, you know, we do have some significant feedback from, from the tree board. But I think right now, it's not contextual, like, I think, you know, the questions that we have right now, hopefully are gonna be answered. Once, once we get more of this, but I don't wanna wait too long, so I wanna be kind of thoughtful and measured on this, but I'll keep working and. Um hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll hear something sooner than later in regards to what the scope is on the tree mitigation. Project is and and strategize and and collaborate and, you know, always have a stakeholder approach to this and. And the tree board, but I, but I just wanna make sure, I think, I just wanna make sure that. We're, we're reacting appropriately at the appropriate time, and so there's still a lot of questions to be left. Uh that haven't been answered yet, so, um but at the same time, I'm happy to provide you any of those comments at any time, and if you wanna see. Or right right now, I think I could probably send it to a, to a group email so you could kind of see the questions, because they're fantastic, uh pretty high-level thoughts. But uh a bunch of them hopefully will be answered once we see what the plan is. Anyways, that's kind of really, but I wanted to kind of bring up, so thanks.
Cindy?
Mine, mine isn't near as technical. I wanted to comment on a couple of community events and. Went to see Beauty and the Beast production with my granddaughters. Excellent, excellent. It is amazing, the talent that is in this town, and what a good production that they put on, totally enjoyable, it was amazing. And then um old-time event, the rodeo. I have helped take ticket money for the rodeo and whatever. People not familiar with the rodeo, at five-thirty, they have something that's called Mutton Bust in that little kids. The official rodeo doesn't start until six-thirty. At six-thirty this year on s- on Saturday night, the grandstands were totally full. We were telling people that wanted to come in, and we still had long lines of cars, that it was. Standing room only, and if you go in, um you don't get a refund on the way back out, and so. I know that there is times that people. Don't realize the importance of the rodeo grounds and how eventually maybe they could. Build the rodeo grounds a little bigger, a little whatever, but it is a facility that is used, yeah. That's it.
Sounds great, thank you.
Uh Devon?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the conference that a few of us went to, uh. You know, there was a lot of good sessions, you know, some of them are more relevant than others. Uh one of the ones I took away from a lot, and I s- I spoke with with somebody about it, is was a. One I went to about mental health and the public space, and uh the speaker talked really about, you know. Working, and there was a lot of people from the audience who spoke up and talked about some of their challenging experiences. Just just to show that the work we do is hard and that other people are having a hard time too and. Have struggles and and wins and uh it's a lot to uh to take in sometimes, so. It was really awesome to connect with other uh people from the state who are uh in this. Position like us and to to hear about their challenges and and uh and their experiences, and that was huge and. The best part was getting to hang out with the crew here, so it was a good little group of four of us, it was great to get to know. Uh Peter and Sue and Libby a little bit better and to be in that weird fancy resort.
It was strange.
Yeah, so um that was really great and uh. Yeah, I went to a couple other ones, it's interesting, yeah, hearing about baiting west from other people and. Just to see other things that are happening around the state and then. I feel pretty good where our town is at, considering hearing a lot of other things that people have to deal with. I heard a long explanation about the tubing, the golden, they have like RFID's on tubes to try to figure out. How many tubes are in the river, so we don't have to deal with that, so.
Sue, um I, I do have some comments on on uh the C M, CML conference. Um I didn't really consolidate my notes because I was running late to prepare for the meeting tonight, but. Um but I was, I really was glad to go, I felt like I uh got some good education, and again, it was fun to hang out with our whole group before. That facility is really a- amazing, kind of scary, actually, as I said to Libby when I went out, I said, I don't know if I'm in. Gotham City or Hogwarts, but it's just quite a place, so anyway. Um but we survived, and I think Peter's gonna tell you more about how he and Devon survived. But anyway, it was good, it was very educational, and I I want, I I would like to come back, maybe Philip, to you for some general guidance on how to follow up on some of the things that. I learned that may be helpful to town with other opportunities, um and. I realize staff time is limited, but who am I to take, take some of their thoughts too, or some of the information too?
September fifteenth?
Yeah.
I, I, I have been in, we've been in those situations where you come back from that, it's like, hey, there's some good.
Right.
Stuff there, how do we talk about it?
And just some questions about whether we or CHA or somebody, and Peter's had some conversations too, but. Are pursuing some of the opportunities that are kind of coming up this summer, and probably some people are on top of it, or we've decided maybe we're not doing it, but I just wanna. Make sure I do a little dump on the possibilities that I've heard, so that's all.
So Peter, it sounds like it's up to you now.
Well, you guys wanna punt visual to close for the night? Devon and I hit up the lazy river with a beer uh each, and uh the two of us side by side in the lazy river. Take out the w- of the lazy river essentially, and.
All my kids are trying to get by.
Yeah, one, one, you and I are just sitting and have a conversation there, maybe twenty teenagers behind us. We're just sitting there, just, I'm like, I'm like, there's teenagers, I don't wanna look or, yeah, I'm just. So we're just, and then they're like playing tag and trying to get underneath us, and we're just like, so anyways, I don't know, what do you think about the packet this week? So there's that visual for you all, we did, I think, five loops, two beers.
Libby and I both really stupidously avoided going down to Washington.
That was funny, yeah, I think there was, like the rest, there was a lot of really good stuff to come out, and I think some of it I'll bring up next. Sessions, as I'm over like round, water storage and different programs out there right now, and um. It's all, can I email you all and see if, you know, that are pertinent or not, but I think. One session I went to that was really helpful, given where we're at right now, was how do you build better relationships between town managers and the mayor? But it it's basically like the board and staff, and so they had the Grand Junction, the mayor of Grand Junction and the town manager of Grand Junction. And they apparently hated each other, wouldn't talk to each other, didn't have each other, didn't trust one another, and then officially cooled and became really close and. Worked together on a lot of things now, so kind of going, talking about different ideas on how to. Do better on that, how can you be a better board and interact with staff and. Um you know, one thing that he said during theirs, I thought was good, is, you know, if you have issues, really, like for me, as a trustees, try to work as much as I can. Just directly with Libby and then let Libby, Libby then field whatever needs to get done with staff, like working with Philip or whoever the next Philip will be. Um and just trying to make sure everybody's kind of staying in their lane, go into their one person, who's gonna go to the other person, and then that way. You don't have a um issues of trust as well, uh which seemed to be a common thing of. When you don't do that, then there's side conversations here, there, and and everything else, but uh anyways, at the end, I raised my question, or raised, raised my hand, asked a question like. So this is our current status and just kind of gave them, you know, um we had to terminate and we had some turnover of the board and all this other stuff, and. First off, there was maybe seven people who came over right afterwards, and they're like, oh man, here's my car, we've been there, it's. It's tough, so the towns have been through this, but they had a lot of advice, or one key piece of advice, because what I asked was, you know, as a trustee, I'm not. I'm hiring committee, I'm not the mayor or anything else, what can I do, and. They're saying, you know, whenever you do have the next person, first off, don't pull the trigger on anybody unless. You feel comfortable handing them the reins to do their job and to run their ship, um if you don't feel comfortable with that person, don't hire him. Um make sure you're comfortable and have confidence in them to run their ship, and then the other was, uh there's quite a few, but. Another was, make sure you get clear guidance, so they know they're walking into and how they're supposed to be moving forward, and one suggestion I gave is. You know, if each trustee or someone wants to just give their top two, like you don't want a long list, like the most important. Thing you're looking for, so that when the person does come in, they have some sort of guidance, and they know, like this is what they're looking for, and obviously. There's a lot of turnover in the boards, so come next spring, there'd be a whole nother direction, we're just trying to give a clear guidance to them. Um so they, again, have confidence in what they're doing, and again, they have benchmarks to kind of measure against.
Thank you. Gina?
Um just, nothing crazy, um in talking a little bit tonight, just about the um. The extra money from the police station and the idea of like, oh, if there's, it makes sense, the carbonite, but. In that commerce, well, that thought process made me think about, whenever that conversation does go, um things start to shuffle out. Was just to bring up again the potential or factor things, I don't think we'll know for a while, but. Congresswoman Peterson's grant that we have out there, just like, if if that would come through, which I. I don't know the exact timeframe of when that would be decided.
Those are typically late, late in the year to be awarded or to be allocated next year.
Oh, it's for next year?
It's a federal fiscal year, so I think what we've heard is generally those appropriations are decided in September-ish. But they're not awarded for. Beginning of the next twenty-four.
Gotcha, okay, well, I guess the, I just wanted to bring up, like, if that could be included, because if we get it, would that help anything? Even though we might have to do, well, the developer uh agreement would come obviously before that, but. Some version of a clause that we're awarded, you know, if that would help with the deed perpetuity stuff. So I just wanted to bring that as a just a reminder, and as a fun fact, she was actually here this past uh week for her Stafford treat. I got to uh actually randomly bumped into her and had a nice conversation, but it was really cool to see that she took her staff here. That went to Mr. for uh Stafford treat, so a lot more than representatives have done in the past, so anyhow. So it's kind of, it's like, oh, and I have to check in on this, so anyhow, but thank you for keeping that in mind.
That, that is a uh idea that I've raised with Jeff and Catherine, is they've been going back to the development agreement, the de- restrictions, to see if there's some way that we can. Anticipate or leave open the possibility of future funding and. And so, yeah.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Um, Paula, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Actually, I want something for Paula though. I was, thank you for all your help getting us organized and off to the conference and supporting us while we were there. So.
Well, you're welcome. It's gonna sound like even with all those efforts, you still ran into some stuff. Or what you do.
Yeah, you had it covered, but it's, uh, they just had, they still had questions, but it wasn't too big a deal, but.
Put together the express report on it though.
And that's the ironic thing. All your rooms should have gone to my town credit card. That's the way it was initially set up.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah.
There was a. Okay. Philip.
Ready?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, I want to recognize Paula for, for, uh, coordinating this process, being a communication hub. And putting out all the questionnaires and things like that. I think that was a really good process.
Yeah.
And a great result. So congratulations to trustee Rice.
Great candidate.
So, yeah, that's good stuff. Um, reminder that we have a process set up for, for looking at. And providing feedback for the town administrator applications that we've received so far. I know you all, several of you have been out, uh, at CML, but we have seven, seven application. Planted in there so far. So, uh, go ahead and take, take some time and take a look at that. Let's put your input in there. I'll get you set up. You'll get an email, some direction on that. Um, but yeah, deadline is the end of day, July sixth, next Thursday. So time flies when you're having fun. Uh, I did, uh, you all may have noticed, seen the email from Jay Breschawee from EDC. Talking about some of the representatives from O Edit that were in town in the county. Um, I did not go down the slide for that, uh, that part of it, but we actually did have a breakfast this morning. Um, Leslie, um, uh, he's the executive director for O Edit was there. I, EDC did invite me to that and I do appreciate that. Um, it was a good opportunity to, to. Leave an impression with them. I think that that matters. Um, and, and they definitely seem to take away that Chaffey County. Is, uh, not just looking for handouts from the state, but also saying, we, we want to do things. We, we know how to be creative and our local governments are, are pretty cooperative most of the time. With, with getting things done in the county. So, um, yeah, it was a worthwhile breakfast this morning. Um, so that's on O Edit. Uh, and then I just want to recognize kind of what's happening, uh, here with our staff. Just adjusting to things that have happened, um, in a short month. Um, I'm pretty darn impressed with progress. Um, I want to, you know. Like the people in the room, other staff that aren't here, but people have been very willing to step up and say, what, what do I need to do to help? And that's, that's pretty impressive. I've got a good top pool here. So.
Right.
Anyway, thanks for staff. That's it.
Great, excellent. Joel, can I think?
Just, uh, thank you for your questions and, uh, good thought under that water conversation. I appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, remember we had a work session with the group, um, dealing with elderly housing, senior housing. This, um. Uh, last week I had a meeting down at the Heart of the Rockies Hospital with, uh, Marasco. Who is their CEO and with, uh, Commissioner Baker and, and Salida Mayor Dan Shore. And Jeff Post, who's a real estate guy. And, uh, he may be on the Heart of the Rockies Board. I'm not sure. And, uh, Dr. Seagle, who's with the Aging Group. So, um, there is some possibility that we can resurrect an older plan. Which, which would involve, um, using a for-profit faith-based organization that, that does. Um, senior housing facilities. And, and so they would, they would, uh, probably do ten memory care units. And fifty, um, you know, assisted living type units. And it would be on hospital property. Um, but there is, you know, there is the possibility that it can all come together. It kind of depends on, on whether the county will, um, ante up for, so, you know, some of the money. Involved in it. But, but that would be a really good start, you know, to get, to even get something down in Salida. And it's right there at the hospital and it's near enough to, you know, Columbine. Columbine's gonna have to keep being the nursing home until they decide they don't want to. Um, so, uh, then later, you know, maybe we could get the, the hospital to use some of their clinic land here. And build something here. So, so I just wanted you to know that there is, you know, something perhaps going on with that. Other thing is that the Health Department is, would like to find, uh, one of us who would be on our board. Uh, dealing with the opiate settlement funds, uh, you know, in terms of, uh. A service really, but it's not that we're doing, we're not doing it with our sixteen hundred a year. So it'd be a, you know, a more of a, uh, it may be a county-wide organization, I think.
Yes.
But anyway, if anybody's interested in that, I would appreciate, you know, being able to send on to you, uh, email. Andrea Carsten. So maybe I saw that.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
Timing and whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
This week isn't good.
Great. Jeff, anything for you?
Oh, no, uh, smooth meeting. I appreciate all your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
And I wanted to also just say, uh, thank you to staff for this week. I know it's going to be hard. And this is their busiest week in town. So, uh, just be really supportive to staff. And also really supportive to everyone who's also working in town service industry. So be kind, be supportive, tip well. Be patient. It's gonna be a week. Good luck.
Well, happy Independence Day. Yeah.
It is. No right turns, no left turns.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we got Rowan. We got that. Oh, in favor. Anybody opposed?
Andrew will stay longer.
Have a great night, everybody.